This brief.
I think we're good. I think we're ready. Can we make it bigger? Is that way to do that? Off that letter? Yep.
So this is a, this is a house on 98 Milton Street. It's part of the Greenpoint Historic Design Designation District. And it's a two-story, peaked roof frame house built by Isaac Holman around 1855. So what we would like, what we were supposed to do is, it's a two-story house with a basement and attic. All the original architectural elements were removed prior to the 1940s. As part of our scope of work for our client, we'll be reintroducing those elements to the front facade, as well as a new portico at the front stoop and a ground floor extension at the rear. This house is adjoining to a and it's freestanding to the east. The property line runs between 98 Milton and 100 Milton with about five feet, five feet, two inches between the two buildings. So there are three items we wanted to bring before the community board. The first is a portico we would produce to introduce. So the 1940s tax photo shows an entrance door surround that is fixed to the facade. What we would like to propose is a projecting portico for this renovation. There's a historic precedent in the neighborhood. We can show you some images of that. This is typical of what we would like to do. We'd like to introduce a hardwood cornice, brackets, and a template to match the original 1940s design, as represented in the tax photo. Some of their other remaining primary facade work, including that replaced windows, doors, trim, subbing and stoop. Those, all of those things that we would like to do meet staff level rules for landmarks and landmarks for restorative work. So those don't necessarily need to be reviewed. What does need the board's comments is this portico. That's, that's, that's the first item. Then the second item is a rear extension that we would like to, that we would like to add. So you'll see on this sheet a number. There's basically a kind of a legend that shows one or two floor extensions on single and double family residences. At our particular property, there's a small garden shed centered on the rear elevation. What we would like to do, it's about 100 square feet, 107 square feet specifically. We would like to basically extend that extension across the, across the rear of this house. So the, our proposed extension is 230 square feet. So where Magli's cursor hovers now, that's the, that's the existing rear extension. And, and what we would like to do is basically just extend that across the back of the house. So, so that, so that the client can have a rear deck off of her parlor level. And below she can have a sort of mudroom and a utility room. That will be more useful than what, what she currently has. The, the depth of the proposed extension is about 10, 10, 10 and a half feet, 10 foot four. The, we would, you'd clad that extension in a stucco to match the new siding. And we would also like to add a new steel and glass enclosure that's historically accurate at the, at the basement level and also at the parlor level to introduce more light into the, into the rear of the house. Our, the distance from, from us to the neighbor is again about five feet. And the distance to the neighbor at the new extension is, is about two and a half feet. So these are the two things we would bring before that. Those are the two main things we would bring before the committee this evening. There are a few other things, small things we would, we would propose to do. We would like to add two skylights at the rear. Those will be visible from an alleyway on Noble Street. You can see them in this Xonometric drawing that we produced. They're on either side of the eve, the rear eve. Just opposite those dormers or adjacent to the dormers. And we would also like to replace the existing concrete patio with new permeable pavers, which we think will be more humane, more aesthetically pleasing, just a more attractive solution. That is our, that is all we propose to do. And we welcome the board's questions.
Have more detailed renderings of the, of the addition in the back?
Um, we have these two.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can zoom in on them maybe. Yeah, the idea is, the idea is basically to restore the, restore the front of the house to the way that it was in the 1940s. So we're basically just adding embellishments, but they're embellishments that are, that are complementary and concordant with what was once, what was once at the front of the house to begin with. And then at the rear of the house, we'd like to, like to introduce a wider expanse of, of windows and operable doors that will flood the back of the house with light. We're also proposing to introduce a compact spiral staircase and a few additional doors and windows below.
One, I have a question. You had mentioned that the glass and the steel is historically accurate. What do you mean by that?
Well, they will be, you know, they'll, they'll be glazed in a way that's, that's sympathetic with what was, what would have been done at the time had something, had something like this been introduced. So, you know, we, we plan to use, you know, kind of a leaded, leaded glass. It has a, you know, uneven mouth blown character.
This is on the doors you're talking that?
Yes, the doors. So there, there are two operable doors on both levels and they're, they're flanked by two fixed side lights. Or, you know, two fixed panels that contain side lights. So as you can see, all of these are an eight, eight or 10 panel design. All of these are true divided lights and they will be, each, each light will be individually capped and, and constructed with a, with a glass stop with a profile, with a profile that's historically correct.
And why the, why the round window instead of keeping to the vocabulary of the four over four other windows?
Uh, the round window is, to be quite honest, it's just a folly, given that this is a secondary elevation. You know, we don't think anyone will see it. There's, there's a fence on either side. So we don't think it'll be, we don't think it'll be visible and we just, we just, we just like the aesthetic of this.
Could you also speak a bit more to the alignment of the windows on the rear facade? So especially the addition of the larger glazing panels where the doors are also happening. I'm noticing that on the addition, the extension part, it doesn't align with what's on the third floor, which now, so it doesn't align with what's on the second floor.
To understand this, to better understand this, if we look at the plan. It's, it's basically, basically the positioning of these doors is dictated by, by, you know, by the interior spaces. So in the top drawing that you see on the sheets, you'll see the, you'll see how the interior space is divided up. That's the, that's the, the garden level. So we have a utility room that we're proposing just, just, you know, just plan, we'll call it Plan North for the sake of this, this exercise. So given the way that, that things have been laid out, it makes the most sense for those doors and fixed side lights to be located where they are in this drawing. And then above, there is a, you know, the alignment is slightly different. There's an open kitchen and to Plan South, there's a sitting room with a, with a fireplace and a small, small element of shelving. So the, basically the elevation is dictated by the, by the way that the interior spaces are, are, are laid out.
Sante, did you have some questions?
Sorry, let me unmute. Hi Kevin. Yeah, and I look at your project before I know, you know, I generated some comment and similar comment. Also I had opportunity to go through, to all the sunburn map starting in 1868. It was interesting really to have a better understanding of, which I know I live on Milton Street. I'm also the co-chair of the block association. So we had other battle in the past about extension. I understand it's a very moderate extension, but you know, it's important to clarify for the board and for other member of the community that we, we don't have any history, or at least on this side, or the south side of Milton Street of legal extension. Somebody has done something illegal along the time, but it's very important to understand. And I'm doing this conversation also for the rest, the other member of the board that, you know, I don't want some time to label addition because they were actually protrusion, let's call it this way, or extension of the house, but they were original, part of the original footprint. And sometime we're moved back left and right along the history, you know, starting in 1860. Maybe some of these houses probably were built already on the mid of the 19th century, especially the frame house. So this, this will be an actual addition. We don't have really, they've been modification, but there were these protrusions already assessed along the block. So just to make a general comment on that. So this will be unprecedented in, in that sense. We're looking at the facade, a couple of comment. Of course, you know, I knew very well the house and when the person that was there before he was sold, he died, he passed away a couple of years ago. So I know there was this little extension, it was a sort of a foyer, a garden foyer. Somehow it was there historically, it was probably used as a laundry. Many of these houses had like latrine at the back even before the tenement law came into the picture. And so many of these were like water closet at the back. In this case, it wasn't. It was literally a garden foyer, probably used for laundry. There was a toilet probably in the past in 1860, 1850. But, so I understand you will extend, you will cover the entire with the back of the house with the extension. It's can fit is a little bit more what it, it was. It's a six thing, let's call it foyer. But something really made me think about, and I believe there was another comment. Still in 18, in this generation of houses, it definitely wasn't used, probably was more nardeco machio. They came into the picture in New York City. I don't know. I feel that there is something, you changed the opening. There was a proportion even when there was the foyer or the back rear opening. The, the change of the opening has been cut away. If you can go back to that, yes, thank you. Yeah, it's been cut away where somebody already had commented. Somehow there is some, I don't know, person, I would love to see if there is a top deck, maybe having two opening proportion aligned with a, with a top bottoming, well, I believe was still, were linked to its original architecture. And still at the bottom, I know I see this art deco presence that comes into this frame. You know, with the, you know, board, wood board, I'm assuming at the back. I'm, I'm, I don't know, I can visualize the color of the, of the stucco at the moment. But definitely it feels like a true addition, but it also, it brings out a style into the picture. Maybe, maybe it could be something even more modern, that could be less leaking, I don't know, to other styles. The round window, somebody else commented, I feel is another architectural element. Then there is the door next to that. Then there is also the spiral staircase. I believe that if we want to analyze this from a landmark point of view and see how we can maybe create, I don't know if there is possibility of maybe we look at certain things in a different way. The same, I have the same feeling for the top skylight, definitely the dormer, I know they are visible. So I don't know what, you know, it will, it will set the precedent and we've been very trying to safeguard despite how little those things seem, but you know, one time the skylight becomes visible for Noble. Yeah, those are, those are the comment. Also, I believe it's a big change because of what it does. The deck is definitely also asked for a spiral stair. I believe already the ground floor gets a connection to the garden. There is also an alleyway that create an independent access to the garden. So I don't know if the spiral staircase necessary, has to be one of the element necessary already. If the, the committee decide to approve this, I believe already getting a deck that wasn't there on a larger extension that wasn't there, probably is already great improvement. It's a great amenity for the house. Maybe the spiral seems, I don't know, an element, a little bit more, more an anomaly historically there. I know somebody, there was some stair, but somebody has had some stair illegally along the block. I want to punctualize this if we're talking about what it was legal or modify some historical stair and to become something else. But yeah, and, and again, you know, I, I like everything up when it's all balanced with the, with the opening, with his dormer. I don't know, maybe it could be continued with siding, be blend maybe into the house even more. I don't know, maybe eliminate the round window, redo something, continue to that symmetry of that opening alignment with the remaining of the opening. And the same doing for the upper deck opening into the terrace.
So Sante, you just listed a whole lot of things. If you could just say one, two, three, four, what are, what do you see as the issues?
Yeah, and I want to do a long story. Well, I see the round window, I don't know, I feel is another, is maybe too many different historical.
There's disharmony in the back. There are too many different, different styles.
Yeah, I see too many different element, too many different style. I know it's a very complex things. Try to, you know, brings out to certain amenity and certain modernity. So I see a lot of stuff.
And you're saying that there's an issue with the fact that there had been a smaller, the, the little like tab egress or whatever that in the original and that now it's turned into a whole extension. Is that, is it wider? Or is the width of the deck and the, the extension wider than the, the width of the, the little, the original?
Oh yeah, absolutely. I mean, I don't know, Kevin had mentioned, yeah, we go from, one is very center to the center door. So the opening of the house, as the case, didn't change. If you look at elevation, I don't know if we have an elevation of the existing rear or the building.
We do, it's here.
Yeah. I mean, there was a, I know that there was a little plastic shed. There was a two shed area on the left. There was other. Later on, it was an Home Depot one, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
But what, what we see of the house, there is definitely a proportion with all the opening. And somehow because of the dormer with the sloped roof, even this garden foyer was somehow aligned in harmony there. Now, if we look at the right, this extension is introducing all the new elements. And maybe there are too many personnel. It would be nice to see the window on the deck start being more aligned with the rest. So at least that upper portion of the house is still remain untouched, you know, in a sense. So at least there is that perception or having that opening. And then we keep that extension, but you know, maybe taking away the spiral staircase. So really the amenity that the upper floor gets is the deck and the amenity that still will get the amenity to pass into the alleyway if they want to use the garden. And where's the access is the, the basement apartment that has the definitely access with a door through the basement. But then how still we distribute, something needs to be reviewed. Are we going to distribute all this opening on ground floor? You know, it would be nice to reharmonize maybe more with the rest of the existing historic building.
Is the, would the, it would be a big amenity for our client to be able to access the garden level from the parlor. You can imagine if, you know, if you were, if you were the owner cooking in your kitchen, potentially taking the food that you've cooked out the parlor and down a stair to the rear yard. Would the community feel, would the community feel more disposed to allowing us to introduce a circulation element? If we were a straight run stair, if we're an L-shaped stair, is the objection mostly to the fact that it's a spiral stair? Because I do think that being able to connect the parlor level to the garden level is an important amenity for this owner.
Right.
I understand, but is this owner going to use the entire house or is it going to become two families?
She will use the, she'll be using this part of the house and, and there will be, she's going to be using the entire house, basically.
And, you know, I, look, I know the, the, the house is so small and I know they adding that, you know, builds a valuable square footage on top of what it was insisting in comparison to a foyer, which I believe is already a great win. Because that's a, it's an economic addition beyond the valuable architectural one. So I believe already, you know, probably a kitchen is going to be on the basement level, I'm assuming, right? I'm assuming that opening there, so it's not going to be kitchen on the upper level.
The kitchen is on, the, the primary kitchen is on the parlor level.
On the parlor level.
I happen to think a regular staircase as opposed to the spiral staircase would, would, would be less intrusive or more in harmony.
I also, I also would just like to comment that this owner is not interested in doing an extremely contemporary renovation. All of our designs for this house have been, they're, they're in a very traditional vein. They're warm. There's a tremendous amount of ornament. She is interested in preserving a historic context and being sensitive to the fabric of the neighborhood. So it may not, you may not be able to discern from the elevations that we're showing, but this is not by any means meant to be a contemporary intervention. It is, it is, it is meant to be sensitive to the historic fabric and to the neighborhood, to the context. All of our interior detailing, all of our fixtures and finishes and equipment, they're all in a very traditional vein. She wants, she wants to preserve and restore the spirit of this house, the way that it was. It's not meant to be, it's not meant to be a discordant or disruptive modernist extension. Although I may read that, the elevation, but the goal is, the goal is for it to feel traditional and historic.
No, no, I think you completely achieved that in the front. In the back, there are some elements. Do any other committee members have anything they want to add?
I, I do. This is Dell. I'm, several people have commented about that round, round window and how it sort of is very disruptive. How important is, is, is this as, is this?
I mean, listen, it's, it's, like I said before, it's a, I think it's, I think it reads better from the interior than from the exterior. You know, it's in a laundry room. It's, it's a, it's a cozy intimate space. Imagine a, you know, imagine a butcher block countertop with a, you know, with a curtain below concealing the laundry appliances. You know, there's a warm palette of colors in this room and materials. Again, traditional fixtures and there's this, you know, sort of quaint round window that's divided into four separate lights that you look out onto the, onto the rear yard. So I think it feels a lot more coherent from the interior potentially than it does with the exterior. I can see how this exterior elevation makes it seem like an anomaly. But you know, from the interior, it has, it has a purpose. It's.
Okay, but we, but we are dealing, we're dealing with the exterior and, and what it looks like. And I think you can see that a number of people have objected to, to, to this.
It's, 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 it's not a deal breaker if we have to lose it, but it'll be a little bit of a bummer just because I think it's a fun, fun touch. But I, I understand the committee's, I understand the committee's directive here, so.
I believe Kevin really, I'm, I, you know, to me and I maybe to somebody else too. I believe one other big step that the block will decide to do, it's a big responsibility. It's like to allowing for the first time, an unprecedented addition, even if it's moderate, it's modest. You know, we have very bad sample in New York City, the West Village or, you know, Carroll Garden where there have been a scandalous, you know, addition. So I understand how moderate it is and if we could compare to assisting protrusion, I will not call it addition because they were historic there for over a hundred years. I believe that's already be a great winner, you know, to have that.
Of course.
You know, I believe what we're really asking is to look at the proportion of the window of the house. As you did well, up the dormer, I'm not including the skylight. I believe it is an intrusion. But the dormer, I, I love the fact you are restoring that accurately. But definitely let's relook at the language and the architectural language. And there's really realigned proportion with the window and we look at style. Sometime even landmark, the commission is very open to sometimes very modern things. Sometime very modern, they bring.
Okay, Sante, Sante, I need to cut you off.
Sure, sure. Sorry. I know we have a lot of time.
Do any other committee members have anything to say about the spiral staircase, the round windows or the configuration of the windows? And then I think we've got to make.
All right. I just want to say, I, I agree with what they're saying in the committee in terms of some of the changes. One of the questions was how does it compare to other backyards? Because I believe other backyards are more modest. And this seems like the spiral staircase, the window, a lot going on in terms of if we were to compare it to some of the other buildings. And I, and what do we compare to other backyards?
I think we have some images of, of other rear yards. I mean, I, I agree. It's, it's a little, it is a little bit more elaborate. I think that, you know, probably the round window makes you feel even more elaborate. We're, we're happy to, we're happy to tone it down if it will make the, if it will, if it will, you know, should it please the committee to do so.
Yeah, just not to pile on, but overall, I think it's a really great restoration. I, I concur with my colleagues that with, with the, the rear, yeah, just the round window, the round staircase and the alignment just kind of leaps out at me. So I feel the same way.
Okay. So it sounds like what I'm, what I'm hearing is let's, let's tone down the round window, make it more proportionate with other, you know, other window systems on the house. And we'll potentially change the, well, not potentially, we will change the spiral to a, to a straight run stair.
Can I say a final thing? So, you know, I believe it's the presence of a stair protruding out. The drawing, they didn't show how much the stair was protruding. There was no dimension in the plan. So it was also difficult to understand. So generally is how much the stair is going to protrude out there as a new approved addition. Ideally, personally I feel it'd be nice just not to have the stair. Keep that simple. The house will get a deck, will get an additional addition. It's a great win. It's, you know. So that's how we'll feel, but I leave it to my other fellow member also to vote on that. And then a very brief comment, and I know Trina, we have time sensitive. And I know that's a staff level, but once the application comes here, I noticed that the front window, I believe there's been a misreading and mostly connected with the law definition of the picture that probably was downloaded from the free version that was made available, the 1940 tax law. I believe those one are two over two window. It's just that the bottom sash, as a matter of fact, it's two over two at the bottom. But what happened there, the bottom sash of the upper floor were actually open and the rail of the bottom sash is literally crossing the mullion of the upper sash and is giving the impression of being a, a four over four, but it's actually, it's a two over two. The house at 100 Milton is a similar style that's been recently renovated. It's a two over two. It's not a four over two. You see that we, on the parlor floor, they are cracked open and the rail is crossing.
Okay, Sante, let's let, let the architect respond.
Well, that's a great comment. I, I think you're right. We, we're happy, we're happy to take a closer look at that. I don't think our design is, is impeded at all by revisiting, whether it's a two over two or four over four. We're, we're happy to do whatever's more, like I said, we're, we're happy to do whatever's most historically accurate here. So that's a great, that's a great comment. Thank you for reading the text for us so closely.
Yeah, yeah. No, I figured there was that. It was unintentional because you reported the, the basement one that's a two over two. But they are all two over two, just.
Yeah, you can, you can see the, you can see the curtain blowing in the breeze.
Right. And the, and the rail of the bottom sash is crossing the mullion. So that's what you get. It's just a matter, I figure it was a misreading of the picture.
I think you're right. Thank you for.
Okay, I think we have to summarize unless any other committee members have anything that they want to say.
I think we need to move on.
I think so too. So in summary, I think I'd make a motion to, to recommend approving the design, appreciating the great restoration job, but, but requesting that more harmony is created in the rear by changing the round window into a window that's similar to the other windows and doing away with the spiral staircase with the understanding you will want to have some egress from that floor, but creating a staircase that's more, more contextual.
Are we, are we voting now or after the hearing?
I, I think, Jerry, you can correct me please if I'm wrong, but do we have to wait until after, until we actually? to wait until after, until we actually close the public hearing and then go into the committee before we vote?
Yeah, that would probably be the best way to handle it.
Okay, so can we hold on to that motion?
Yes.
All right, great, great.
It'll be better when we do it next time, when I say it next time.
All right, great, thank you. So before we move on, um, I just want to acknowledge that Richard Barrack is here representing the Borough President's Office and Benjamin Solite, I see, is here representing Council Member Levin's office. And I, I may have missed someone else, so please let me know, but, um, I happen to know, I just noticed the two of you and I want to thank you for being here. And welcome your comments on any of these applications. So the next application is 135, 137 Bedford Avenue. Resoning there. So do we have an applicant, do we have the applicant here?
We do. Uh, Dell, it's Richard Lobell from Sheldon Lobell, representing
Hi, Richard.
Hi.
Okay, so
This is Faye Ann from Sheldon Lobell as well. I would need to share my screen.
Okay. Okay, Dell, so can we, let's, one, two, proceed.
I don't have the option to just share my screen right now.
Okay. Richard, do you?
Change it? Oh, now I got it, now I got it.
It's got it, okay.
Yep.
Great. Good evening, um, and thanks for having us here tonight. We're going to proceed really quickly, uh, run through the proposed rezoning and then we're, the applicant team is happy to answer any questions. I'm joined by Dawn Kiernan from, uh, 135 Bedford, who's the owner who's with us tonight. So what we've got here for Bedford Avenue is a rezoning, which is merely a commercial overlay rezoning, but it's for commercial overlay, 100 feet deep between North 9th and North 10th Streets on the east, east side of Bedford. So you'll see the zoning map here and we'll show it more in focus in the coming slides. But basically what you notice is that, uh, there's currently about 10 lots located on this frontage on Bedford and of those, roughly five of those have existing commercial uses. So, uh, the applicants here for lots five and six, you can see them highlighted in red in the middle of the screen, would seek to establish a commercial overlay over that entire frontage, which would allow a couple of things. First is it would make all those commercial uses that are currently there conforming. Because right now those uses are within R6A and R6B districts and while they're existing non-conforming uses, they're not, uh, they're pursuant to a commercial overlay, so they become conforming uses. And the other thing is that if the applicant ever chose to redevelop here, I'll tell you that right now, given the COVID situation, what's going on, there's no real present intention to do this. Things were different when we started this application two years back. Uh, but if they did decide to redevelop one day, they would be able to use commercial uses on the ground floor. Just to point out a couple of things on this map that you can see, um, on, on the west side of Bedford between North 5th and North 12th, uh, all but one of the blocks has a commercial overlay. So of those seven blocks, front, six of them have commercial overlays. On our side of this, four out of seven have commercial overlays, uh, which totals for the east and west sides of the block, about 75% of those block fronts have commercial overlays. And so you get what you would expect, which is you have a commercial thoroughfare here, uh, there's businesses, et cetera. The canvas located across the street within the commercial overlay is written a letter of support. It's, it's basically, you know, the situation is such that we have a commercial overlay across the street from us between North 5th and North 10th. And we've got, and you can take a look, it's in the middle of the screen, an M12 R6A mixed use district on the back of us. So most of this block, most of our block is zoned M12. And what this results in is we've got commercial uses in front of us. We have commercial uses around us because of the existing commercial uses on the corners. About 80,000, 70,000 square feet of commercial uses to the rear of us. So we're surrounded. Um, really, this would kind of be to equalize our treatment on the block. Next slide. So here you see some pictures of a block front. You can see kind of some low level, uh, residential buildings along with these commercial storefronts which exist, uh, closer to North, North 10th. You've got a restaurant use on this block frontage. Uh, you've got some office use and this is a zoning change map. This is really all we're seeking. Very important. The current zoning on the property is R6A and R6B. The buildings that you could build here, both before and after the rezoning are the same. At the R6A, you could build, you know, a roughly six-story residential building and the R6B, you could build a roughly four-story residential building. That doesn't change. There's no additional bulk from this. It's just the ability to use the ground floor for commercial uses, which again, given the fact that we've got roughly 80,000 square feet on this block, of which really 70,000 square feet is currently used for commercial, we think it's kind of in the interest of fairness to allow, um, you know, our applicant to proceed here. Uh, we, we penciled out the numbers, you can see in the upper right, approximately 88% of this block consists of commercial uses and approximately 50% of the project area consists of commercial uses. This is what we call at city planning, uh, you know, when we, when we come in with this, a corrective rezoning basically allows the situation, which is very prevalent on the ground, to be reflected on the zoning map. Um, so that's really the bulk of the application. Uh, and I'm here, Dawn's here, the applicant team's here, we're happy to answer any questions.
Yes, I have a question. Does your, so your applicant is the owner of the entire space that you're asking to rezone?
They're not. So the way that city planning, uh, you know, approaches this and the way that we make the application is that we come in with our development site, which here is 135 and 137. So 135 is Dawn's property, 137 is, is owned by LLC Alex James, I believe, I'm sure. Um, but, but basically we've got two lots out of these 10 lots. When city planning looks at this, they ask us to develop a land use rationale and the fact that 50% of these storefronts, Dell, are used for commercial purposes basically merits the rezoning extending the So, uh, we don't own the entirety of the property. We actually own a very small amount of frontage. We have about 32 feet of frontage, um, but we, we are asking for the application of the commercial overlay to the, to this entire block front.
Does anyone else have any, um, questions? Are there
I have a question. I remember when the, the property across the street came through with a similar request. Um, there, there were a lot of neighbors that spoke up against it. And have, have neighbors chimed in about this?
Well, I, I leave it to the community board if any of the neighbors have chimed into the community board. Um, I talked to Marie before, there was a lot of chatter on the next application, but not that much on this one. Um, again, we submitted this letter in support from, uh, someone at the canvas across the street. Um, Devin Gil-Martin wrote a very lovely letter talking about the fact that as with most small businesses, they generate sales from customers who discover them on foot and that they're surprised, many customers are surprised to find their shop on this block. Um, they, they hope that this moment presents a new opportunity for retailers and with so much uncertainty, they feel strongly this is a chance to make Bedford Avenue even better for residents and visitors. So, so the, the neighbors that did consult were supportive. You're right on that other rezoning on 116 Bedford, there was, you know, some serious opposition. Uh, we really have not encountered that here and, and, you know, the owners reached out to the extent they can, talked to some people and has gotten good feedback.
Okay, so I have another question. What kinds of properties surround the backyards of your applicant's properties and the other properties that are part of this, um, 10 lot system here?
So, um, lot three, as you can see on the map, has a ground floor, a retail establishment, uh, which again, because of the situation of the zoning lot and because there's an M12 to the rear of us, they can extend fully into that commercial backyard. So it's, it's like, they're really on top of us with regards to the ground floor use, making it even more feasible for us to have a ground floor commercial use. So Dell, to answer your question, commercial use on that lot three and on lot, you know, on lot seven, uh, you know, on behind us, there's a, there's a longstanding auto repair shop. So, um, you know, there's some serious, serious commercial uses to the rear of, of this, of
So we're not talking about, uh, residential buildings there surrounding the backyard?
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, you can see lot, I mean, it's almost like an oasis there, but lot five, you can see on the northern part is a, is a residential building. That's separated from the Bedford Avenue block front by this auto repair. So, you know, at, which, which again is itself to the rear of these properties on the ground floor of Bedford. So it's really kind of all contained in this commercial use.
I have a, I have a question, Dell. I guess the worry, I mean, it seems like a fair ask considering that there, you know, the other properties on the block have, you know, commercial establishments in them. But, you know, the, you know, the key worry is so on, you know, putting bars in there with gardens and
Right.
This board is flooded with complaints with noise, people, you know, with families not, you know, being disturbed through the night. And back there, you know, you have the canyon effect. So I just, uh, you know, do what the plans of either owner is in terms of what type of businesses they want to act into these spaces if they, or you get the zoning changed.
Yeah, you know, I know it's, I know it's a frequent concern of the community board. Uh, and, and, um, you know, 135, basically this, this isn't, this development is not happening anytime soon. It's really just really perspective, but, um, the, the applicants here live in 135 and the intention would be on a going forward basis that there would be a use compatible with residences. Both of the buildings under the current intention would have residential uses above. So neither of the, neither 135 or 137, or the actual applicants here, want to have a use which would conflict with that. They don't want to alienate their, you know, the potential occupants, owner occupants or the tenants there. Um, so the intention would just be to have, uh, you know, to have typical small retail, um, which is also consistent with the uses across the street that we And again, just as an aside, uh, you know, there's this longstanding noxious auto repair use to the rear of the, the northern part of the property. So, um, you know, we note that it's, it's a little bit of a different situation and, uh, you know, we're sensitive to the concern and right now the present intention would, you know, would be not to have any, any uses such as that.
So my concern, um, in, in light of, in line with what Steve is saying is how can we get any reassurance that if they put in, if restaurants are put into these spots, that they would enclose any kind of backyard service area so that it wouldn't be a, a noise hazard to the, to the surrounding, uh, residences?
Sure, well, first of all, um, there's some protections in the zoning that would require, and first of all, the first thing I note is that a, a little difference between this and 116 Bedford, which was another application which was discussed, which was, was that those applications had, um, had 100-foot deep lots. So they had the ability to place the physical plant of the building and then they, they were, you know, they were a 30-foot backyard. This application with a, you know, with an 80-foot yard provides far, far less of an opportunity to have a full building plate and also to have a rear yard space. It's just a more compressed type of atmosphere. But understanding that, Dell, um, what happened at 116, because again, you know, it's, it's a matter of public record, the applicant there basically, uh, made representations to, uh, to the council member, uh, submitted a development letter saying that they, you know, they would, they would not have any noxious uses and, uh, the council member held them to that and, and allowed them to proceed. So, um, you know, again, they're very sensitive to this. We understand it's an issue. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're happy to continue to work through it and to talk about it, but, but right now I think, you know, as far as the, those uses are concerned, number one is that, um, there's really no present intention of doing that. They're going to have residents in these buildings going forward, so they wouldn't want to, you know, conflict with their own uses. There's an auto-related uses to the year, to the rear, which is, you know, directly, you know, which is really kind of, uh, really affects the use on the ground floor, but moreover, um, you know, going forward, if that's the, if that's what's asked of the council member, I'm sure that, um, you know, he'll, he'll bring that up with us.
Well, I, I think what, what we are, um, exploring now, not just with you, but with other commercial uses is the desire to have something in writing from you that would memorialize an agreement that you would, you would not, and that you would not, um, have an open, if you, if the restaurant goes into those, those, uh, those lots, that there would not be an open backyard service, that you would, the service, any service that would be done in the backyard area would be enclosed.
So, um, I don't, I, you know, I don't have the authority to bind the applicant here. I, you know, I, I know that Dawn's on the call. I'm happy to, 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 if, if she's able to speak, I'm happy to open this up to her, um, for that discussion. I just don't, you know, I just can't, I don't want to make that representation.
Hi, this is Dawn. Thanks for considering our application. Uh, we live in the building, we don't have any intention of doing anything immediately, but I understand your request. We also, um, either expect to be living here or have people living here. So I, I, I think at this point, Richard and I will have to regroup later, but we hear you, we understand what you're, why that makes sense.
All right, so the, um, if there are no other questions, then the committee, we will, you know, the committee will
I have a question too. I have a question too.
Sure, okay, sure.
Hi, Richard. Now, I, what I want to understand, uh, probably the, the square foot of the commercial space, the actual one, the old storefront, they're about what, 700 square feet, uh, approximately currently without the garden?
Um, I know that the total lot area of, of these lots is about 1633. Um, so yeah, I would imagine that the ground floor coverage would, would be roughly, um, you know, eight, 700 to 800 square feet.
Without the garden. And, and, and with the rezoning, would, would they be unified? It'll become one space or it will be maintained in their size?
You know, honestly, there was an intention that they would be brought together, but, um, again, since the uncertainty of, of the current situation, they, they basically have, haven't, haven't, uh, chosen to, to forego those plans. So right now they're just single, single zoning lots.
Yeah, I'd love to summarize a little bit what they're concerned are. That's why I was questioning this. Uh, one, that the increased number, especially in 90, is kind of a little bit absurd, even during COVID, uh, the business activity we've been seeing closing down and leaving all the storefront empty, definitely are not the bar and not the restaurant for some reason. And what's interesting, we already have replacement for like the clothing store that been forced to leave this space and now there are applications already, it seems absurd to believe that, for a coming to a bar. So it seems that if this continues with this trend, we, we look at the future of not diversity, it's a future of bar and restaurant. The people know how they have the time to rent a place and to resist until the COVID issue will be over. And so this is part of the concern, the size, because a small-sized storefront, they become still affordable and accessible for independent, uh, small business, you know, diverse, not necessarily a bar. And definitely as, uh, Dell has mentioned, they're definitely the exclusion of the backyard, which have been for committee, long time battle for quality of life. And sometimes, uh, being able to bring those intrusive activities into the backyard, they even have wider impact to the quality of life of the community. So it'd be great to have a precise business plan and probably also if this contemplated and accepted incorporated into the whole legal documents, which they're, they're allowed you to qualify for, for rezoning of. So, uh, yeah, this superficially, just to launch that, I don't know exactly what would be possible. And, and the sample, the ride, maybe the mechanic, because still have an affordable rent to be there. So we like the diversity, even the mechanic, to have a mechanic there, as long as it's not waiting and waking up the neighbors. It's not a bad thing. It means symbolize diversity. So that's important.
Yeah, we're, we're glad to hear that. I mean, it's a, it's a diverse area, it's a diverse block. Um, you know, again, uh, we face a situation where we have commercial uses surrounding these properties. Um, Dell, you know, obviously the community board and the committee will do what, you know, what's right for the community board. Um, you know, and Dawn and I will discuss this further, but, uh, you know, we respect your consideration of this. We really appreciate your time and, and, you know, whatever ends up in the resolutions, we, you know, we're, we're on board. We understand.
Thank you.
Dell, I have one other just quick question. So, uh, Richard, or do you have communication with the owners of 137? So, Richard, do you have communication with the owners of 137 that you could convey these concerns to them?
Yeah, we do, actually. I think, I'm not sure if Alex is on the call. I know she had trouble getting in at first. Alex, are you available?
She might be as an attendee, I'm not sure, but I can't see.
Okay. Okay. So the answer, the answer, Steve, is yes. They've been apprised of the entirety of the application and we'll be able to get them these comments.
She's on via audio.
Okay.
I guess I have a quick question, if we could just to clarify. Based on the street view, I can see it's a sort of split levels that when you're talking about the ground floor, is it the garden floor or the leads up on the stairs?
Uh, well, actually, it's a good question. If they redeveloped the building, it would be, it would be at grade. Currently, though, those are basements and not cellars. So, you know, technically, if, if you maintain the commercial use in the current building, you'd have to do it on the basement floor, the lower level.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Sure.
So any other questions? Then we will.
I'm sorry.
Yes?
To that point, so the basement would then be used for storage?
I can't hear you. Say it again.
So the basement then would be used for storage for the retail?
Potentially, if you develop commercial here, the basement would be used for storage for retail.
Del?
Yes?
We have a question from the, in the chat, from Katie Sopatarski. Two questions, would be potentially a chain store, a bank, a bar. Do you already have a tenant in mind?
Um, you know, this, the application started some time ago. And while there was a consideration as far as reaching out to potential tenants, given the fact that we've been on an eight or nine month pause, there's, there's no current conversations. And also, you know, they don't know how the, how the ULC is going to go. So there's, there's no, there's no current tenant in mind, there's no conversation with tenants. Just from what Dawn and I have discussed, you know, she's talked about having a small local retail store. But, but again, it's just, there's no development plan right now. It's, it's just, it's just to allow for this use on a going forward basis if they did have a commercial use.
All right. There's nothing else, then we will move on to the Acme Smoke Fish application.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, Del, we had, we had a number of people who said they wanted to speak on the item. So let me know when you want to do that.
On the Acme Fish item?
Yes.
Sure. Why don't we have the presentation and then we can have people speak unless you, unless the normal course is to have the speakers first. But I thought perhaps maybe the presentation first, then people can speak. And first, how about we, we'll have the presentation, we'll ask questions, and then the people who want to speak can speak. That's how we do it.
I just wanted to be prepared.
Right. Okay. Good. Thank you. All right. So Acme Fish.
All right. Okay. Here, let me share. Is it possible to share my screen? Or I'm not, is there a, a presentation loaded up? Or do we need to share our screen?
No, I can give you the, I can make you a presenter.
Okay.
I just got to know that if you're the person, right?
Sure. I can be the person.
Okay. Just give me a second.
Maybe everybody should mute their computers too, because there is the background.
Yeah, there is a bit of noise, yes.
Del, do you hear me? Simon. Del?
Yes, I hear you, Simon.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I've just dialed in a little.
Okay. Great. Yes, I do. Thanks. Does everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Great. So we're very happy to present our project here, or our application, rather. This is about keeping Acme Smoke Fish in Brooklyn. And it's not just sort of the title of, of the project, but it's, it's been the driving force of what we've been working on for over three years now, hand in hand with Acme Smoke Fish. And we are happy to take you through what we believe is an innovative solution to keep one of Brooklyn's most beloved brands in Greenpoint, to retain and stimulate job growth for manufacturing jobs and other commercial jobs and create open space in the process. So we, we think that this is a forward-looking project and we're, we're happy to share with you tonight. So with that, I will hand it over to Adam Caslow, the co-CEO of Acme Smoke Fish.
Thank you, Jeff. Nice to see you all again. For those of you who may be hearing about this for the first time, Acme Smoke Fish is a fish, smoked fish, smokier and distributor located in Greenpoint, Brooklyn. Acme was started by my great-grandfather, Harry Brownstein, in the early 1950s. And we've been happy to be in Greenpoint ever, ever since. Recently, you know, I, I guess fortunately during COVID times, you know, we've been able to kind of continue operations and, and service both the New York metro area as well as points, points outside of, of town by utilizing the foundation that has been built here over many generations. However, as our business continues to grow, like other manufacturers, we, we have struggles in, in finding space to expand. Next slide, Jeff. I, I think many of you, and as we briefed you all previously, have maybe been down to Fish Fridays, but, but our location on Gem Street is the headquarters of Acme Smoke Fish. We employ a lot of people who live within the neighborhood and, and we've got 170 employees there. But we also have additional facilities located throughout the East Coast. You know, fortunately, our business has continued to slowly grow and thrive even through the pandemic. And, you know, we've been faced with some difficult challenges. How do we continue to expand our business in a, you know, finite capacity? But being a Brooklyn food manufacturer, being so integral to our brand and our identity, you know, really wanting to stay here, we appreciate the community, both from a labor force, from being close to our core marketplace. It's been a wonderful marriage for many, many years. As, as I lamented on these challenges to a friend of mine, who later introduced me to Jeff, we, you know, Jeff, Jeff kind of, as I explained, these challenges of running out of room to, to grow, Jeff had an interesting idea as to how we could potentially build a runway for Acme to grow in the next several years. I think hopefully generations, while doing it in a way that would probably be cross-subsidized by additional commercial development. We tried to examine some other solutions on our own that were either cost prohibitive or took us out of Brooklyn, neither of which were, were viable options. You know, some of you have been down to our plan and, and, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult to sustain the activity that we have, we, you know, the activity that we're currently seeing. And so the proposal that we've put together uses an assemblage that allows us to create an efficient, an efficient rebuild of our factory to be able, and, and give us some runway for future growth, but ultimately will allow Acme to continue to be a staple of Greenpoint for generations to come. Jeff?
Yeah, great. And Adam, thanks. And so Adam got into, you know, part of this solution. You know, I think, as he mentioned, we were introduced by a mutual friend. And I think we sort of were, became known for, for 25 Kent. And certainly, you know, we borrowed some of the 25 Kent frameworks for this project. But I think there were a few key departures. And the biggest one clearly is, is that, you know, 25 Kent was a speculative building for, you know, tenants to be determined. And here, this was a project that really is led and was built around sort of what would work for Acme. They had, as Adam said, a lot of other sort of offers to buy the land. But this, you know, the, the proposal, I guess, that we had sort of stood out, you know, and as we worked together, we, we encountered a couple sort of must haves. One had to do, obviously, was sort of the cost. Two had to do with the fact that, you know, Acme could only move once. In, you know, for most of our tenants, their sort of office, it's administrative office space. And so you can have a tenant on the eighth floor, you say, okay, well, I want to renovate the eighth floor. So you move them down temporarily to the seventh floor, and then they move back once the renovation's complete. Acme's infrastructure, especially being food-based manufacturing, is so expensive that them moving out of state was the same as them moving across the street. And so they really couldn't be staged. And so we have a solution that, you know, is cost-effective, provides them runway, and, you know, gets this all into a project that we believe is viable. And to sort of illustrate that, we have this diagram here. So this assemblage is the entire block, running from Meserel to Banker, down to Wythe, North 15th and Gem. So Acme currently operates in these shaded parcels, the red shaded parcels. And then the site of the future Acme factory will be about 30,000 square feet on the Meserel Banker corner. And again, the key is really to keep them operational the entire time. So, you know, as they have been throughout the, the COVID pandemic. So phase one is to build their new facility on that rectangular space. Then they'll get all their, you know, we'll get our signups, they get their signups. Once they're fully sort of up to speed with production capacity, only then will they decommission the existing facility. And then we will go ahead with phase two, which is the ancillary commercial component. And then this lot, which borders on Wythe Ave, will be predominantly open space that we'll get into in more detail later.
So as Jeff mentioned, you know, what we talked about is where we could put the building itself. And it was really the available open portion of the site that allows for that, this to be a single move into a operating facility. And, you know, the footprint is about 30,000 square feet, but the need and really to get Acme's, Acme's food production to be, you know, appropriate for what they, what the demand is, it needed roughly about 95,000 square feet. And to fit that operation, we really ended up starting to looking at, how do we create a facility that is vertical, but is still maintaining the operational needs that Acme had? So we ended up with, on that site, with a four-story building. It's roughly about 104 feet tall. And one of the challenges that occur when we, you know, when we create this industrial building is we do have a lot of equipment that supports the production that occurs in the processing facility. Obviously with Smoke Fish, there's a lot of exhaust requirements, so on and so forth. And we had to create a building that allowed for some separation with the future building that allows for all the mechanics to occur at the top of the building and not be impeded by any future development. Next slide, Jeff? So this is the site from Banker Street, the elevation. And what's interesting is you can start to see that contextually, it starts to marry up with what's happening in the neighborhood. There's a light industrial feel for Acme's portion of the building, and we're starting to introduce the same material family that you would see within the neighborhood. What's important here is as you start to see the office development beyond, it's, it's hard to read that from, from Banker Street. But we were able to, you know, keep everything as it relates to Acme within that area and be able to provide the facility with all that it needs to be a modern facility and keep them within the area. Next slide, Jeff? So this is a little bit of detail of what we were studying when looking at the facility itself. You could see that part of what, the advantage of being a one-story facility are tall, high bay type spaces. And we, obviously, in looking at folding the facility over onto itself, we had to think of ways, creative ways to sort of take the interstitial spaces and align them with the tall spaces, so we could absolutely minimize the height of the building to what is required to, to be able to produce the food that Acme Fish does there. So what we try to do is take two floors of support space and align it with high bay spaces and allowing for the building to be as short as it possibly can be. Next slide. So I wanted to walk a little bit through how we, after tucking the building, how our future development would, would start to affect the neighborhood in a positive way. So you could see in the kind of purple space, the Acme facility is surrounded by the future development or the phase two, as Jeff described. And what we're proposing there are a good mix of retail and open space that allows for us to, to provide the kind of retail that will enhance the neighborhood, but also a lot of seating and public ways that will be engaging to the area and complement the future development that's occurring in the area itself. The retail is a little over 30,000 square feet, and we hope to provide the type of retail that, you know, would be kind of a benefit to the neighborhood itself. Next slide, Jeff? So this is a little bit of the program itself. So when we look at phase two, the overall project will be about 587, 83,778 square feet. We just talked about the retail at 33,818,000 square feet. We looked at, we're looking at commercial and retail components of development will generate up to 2,000 jobs in the years to come. There'll also be parking spaces. It's roughly 150 parking spaces that'll be provided inside the building. And then we're looking at providing almost 21,987,000 square feet.
How many, I'm sorry, how many parking spaces?
150.
Inside?
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And that's, that's one thing that was, you know, I think discusses, the idea of sort of pulling some of the, the on-street parking into the building.
So we'll have a variety of seating areas and a number of peed pedestrian areas that would be open to the community. Yeah. And this is a rendered landscaping plan to show how we'll have different variety of seating, plantings, and a number of green space areas for, for the community. And go to the next slide. This is a rendering of how that would feel. So contextually, we were looking at using materials that were reflective of the neighborhood and that would feel that is appropriate for the neighborhood. And the seating areas would be inviting and engaging. Next slide. This is another view of the public open area. A lot of opportunity for seating and engaging.
Good evening. My name is Raymond Levin. I'm with the Law Firm of Herrick Feinstein. We are land use counsel to the development. And here is what we're asking for from the city in order to accomplish the plan that you've just seen. We're looking to change the zoning from M3-1 to M1-5. The zoning there is M3-1. You'll see on a zoning map that I'll show in a second how that is isolated and surrounded by the rezonings that were done about a decade ago, which created some MR districts. And Acme, at the time, lobbied to keep their M3 district. They felt that that would protect them from development pressures. Today, the M1-5 is what's going to protect them by allowing them to have a new factory and a commercial office space in order to make that possible from a financial point of view. The other things that we're asking for is a couple of heightened setback waivers that a large-scale general development designation will allow. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see the M3-1 on the left zoning map, surrounded by M1-2, R6Bs, and other districts in the area. And then outlined on the right-hand side zoning map, you can see the M1-5 for that, for the block of this project. Next slide, please. The heightened setback requirements, where the street wall height is 85 feet before you set back, we're looking at 104 foot before you set back. So that's, on part of the site, it's, you know, about 20 feet or so higher than the M3 zoning would allow. And the sky exposure plane, there are a couple of spots where, because of setting back away from the top of the factory to allow for ventilation, it pushes the development a little closer to Gem Street. Also, the fact that we're moving it back from the corner of Wythe to create that public open space. Next slide, please. You can be able to see the small amounts of these intrusions that we're asking for waivers for. You can see on Meserol and Gem Street relatively small requirements, but necessary to make the floor plates reasonably wide and allow for the ventilation on the roof of the factory. Next. Well, we're back to the image that we saw in the beginning. You now can see how that, how the factory requires that setback to allow for ventilation, and how that pushes things a little bit over and needs the heightened setback waivers. Next. I will, I'll let you go back to the architect who knows what he's talking about.
Yeah, I will hear a couple other points just to jump in. This is the 12 Franklin Development, the project that was approved a little while ago. You know, and you can see sort of the comparison. Willing Vale is in the distance, clearly. What's not shown is Future Call Your Place and other waterfront developments. Joe, do you want to talk a little bit about just kind of like the needs of Acme being a standalone facility and the venting and things like that? No? Okay.
That was, I was on mute. I apologize. So when we were looking at, looking at how to make sure that the scale was appropriate, you know, you look at the building to the right on this image, that starts to really define where we want it to be as it related to size and bulk for the building. As you look at the Acme portion of the building, it has to be a standalone facility. It has to be able to stand on its own before the buildings that are adjacent to it are created. And then the building that you could see for us to get the floor area that's required, we had to also make sure that any of the smokestacks, the equipment, had the appropriate clearances from above that. So what we were trying to do is make sure that we struck a balance between what was the appropriate mass, as well as the clearances that are required to operate the building itself. Do you want to go to the next image?
Sure.
And this, and this is an image of it coming from the area where we are providing the public space. I think what we were trying to do here was to make sure that at the pedestrian level, the things that were perceivable from an experience perspective felt that were, felt that they were appropriate for the neighborhood, and make sure that the materiality was also appropriate for the neighborhood. So we were introducing bricks, metals that were, if you look at the adjacent buildings that were there, and felt that it was inviting to the neighborhood itself and had an appropriate scale to the adjacent buildings.
So just to summarize, you know, most importantly for many of us, myself included, we will be securing Acme's longstanding tradition of Fish Fridays in the neighborhood. But beyond that, this is going to retain Acme in the neighborhood. It's going to retain the jobs that they employ. We are, in addition to that, we are working with various local organizations on the construction side and on workforce training and recruitment to make sure that the economic benefits of the project stay as close to home as possible. And so, you know, with that, we welcome your questions.
So this is Dell Teague. I have a couple of questions. Can you please tell me again specifically what the numbers are for the waivers that you're asking for, for the height and setback? I think you said that at this point, that if you have an M1-5 at 85 feet of height, you need a 20-foot setback. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So what is it that you, what is the change that you want?
That's the change. 20 feet additional height at the street wall for a portion of the property, not the whole thing.
But what would the as-of-right be?
As-of-right in the M1-5, the as-of-right is 85 feet high. And it's going to go up to 104, so approximately 20 feet more.
So as-of-right, so you're asking to go up 20 feet higher than what you could do as-of-right?
That's correct.
But with the setback?
The setback happens above that.
Above that? Right now, in an M1-5, if this were changed to M1-5?
Yes.
The setback would occur at 85 feet?
That's correct.
And so you want the setback to occur 20 feet higher?
That's correct.
Okay.
Ray, do you want to put the sections back up? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
If you look at Meserol, you see the little square that's colored in sort of purple?
Yep.
Yeah, that's the, that takes the street wall from 85 to 104. And you can see the heightened setback line up going through that. And then if you look at the Gem Street image, you can see the little bit of the upper two floors that penetrate the sky exposure plane. You can see the Gem Street has a little bit at the top, but nothing at the bottom. So these waivers are not surrounding the entire development. They are at certain points where, where, as you can see on the left-hand Gem Street, it's in order to push the mass so that the roof of the factory building is, has open space above it. And then on the other heightened setback piece, on the upper floors, just so that those upper floors don't get, you know, their corners chopped off. That's why that's there. Those are the heightened setback waivers we're asking for.
Okay. And you showed the picture of this building next to Franklin Street, 12 Franklin. How much higher is this building than 12 Franklin?
Franklin is 110 feet to the roof, not counting any, you know, obstructions on the roof, mechanical equipment and such. Our building is 175 feet to the roof.
175?
I think it's 110. Go ahead.
Okay, and one more question before other people have a chance to ask theirs. You were saying that this was, you chose to do the office space because it was something that would suit Acme Fish's needs. So why office space? Why not light manufacturing? Why not a combination of office space, light manufacturing?
Yeah, sure. So, well, the office spaces, it really is a combination of office and manufacturing. It's just that Acme is taking 100% of the manufacturing component.
I understand that. That we do understand. But why, but that's, Acme is just, you know, insulated into itself. Why then is the office space purely office space? I guess you have some retail, too.
Some retail, yeah.
Why not some additional, for diversity, additional light manufacturing in that auxiliary building?
Well, it's one building. It's, I think, you know, look, at the day, this is meant to be a viable project. And this is the minimum amount of office space that we have believed was viable in order to subsidize the incredible, you know, loss leader that is the Acme building. So in order to make the deal work for them, this is what we ended up with.
So you don't think that light manufacturing would bring in enough financial benefit? If you had some more time?
Dell, can I ask?
Sure.
What you just asked.
Sure, sure.
Jeff, are you guys utilizing allowable FAR? Using every bit of it or get it passed over?
Yes, we're, well, I mean, I would say materially, yes. You know, there's, like, is it down to the last square foot? I'm not sure. But materially, we're using all the FAR that would be allowed under this zoning.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Sante.
Okay, Sante.
Yes, several, several questions. One is, so probably we have a most excluded sect Acme, any possibility of manufacturing. And it's something to do also with the other economic factor and to remind everybody how valuable a manufacturing job, and I believe Acme much know very well, that there is no other job that retail or other commercial can offer to citizens. They don't have a college degree. They probably have just a high school degree. It's very well proved that the amount of money by becoming technician in the manufacturing or in the craft business is uncomparable. Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you. There's others may want to mute.
Yeah, so that's.
Go ahead. We can hear you.
Yeah, sorry, there was a voice in the background. Yeah, this would be a major loss not to have, you know, and what I believe the community, unfortunately, as a member of the board, we are here to mirror feeling of other members of the community that have other ordinary lives, and they can be here to comment, but we collect these comments and this information. So I want to voice this out because definitely, yes, you're asking us to take Acme Fish and feels a little bit, to many members of the community felt a little bit kind of blackmailing, you know, if we want Acme to stay there, we have to allow that to put 600,000 square feet, which they're going to become commercial, you know, and they're going to have an impact. And then what kind of job they're going to bring? I know we spoke about 25 Kent, but I believe you didn't have all these small manufacturing businesses. As a matter of fact, you recently, if I'm not wrong, this was an information, one of the new tenants has been Amazon Music, right? And I don't think they pay what other small business they could pay, you know? And I know Mr. Raymond Levin had stated at the time when we were talking about 25 Kent, when he was questioned about how affordable the space will be, the manufacturing space, I believe he had declared in one interview that, yeah, if they can afford $1 a square foot, that's what they will pay. Could you say that that's what has happened at 25 Kent? Somebody has come.
Sante, just to, sorry, just to.
Amazon is not one of the industrial tenants.
Yeah.
It's an industrial tenant.
Yeah. I just want to set the record straight that they're taking office space. Amazon Music was reported to sign a lease that is not in the industrial space.
Oh, it's not in that space.
Correct. So I just, sorry, didn't want to interrupt, but.
But what I'm trying to say, that the scale of the building itself is taken away, even if it's office or it's commercial, is definitely taken away from all the small individual business that they have characterized historically, this district, you know, as an industrial district since the 19th century. And even later on, you know, many of the industrial space have been going to artists, they've been going to craftsmen, you know? And the benefit of this business are, you know, that they have given opportunity to many of these individuals to make fun of money they would make in any retail job or in any hotel jobs. So that's why Dell has mentioned, you know, about the industrial business, how much industrial we are, because that's, you know, us to come here and build nine-story building, but you also, what are you offering? You're offering all commercial and office spaces? It's kind of weird, the trade-off. I mean, it's, I don't know. And you maximize every possible things you can maximize, you know, the height, the mass, you know? It's like, I don't know. And there is no reference in any of your application. There is no reference about that there is an historic district. You are referencing the big hotels. You're referencing the big building on the other side towards Williamsburg, but you're not making any reference of the fact that there is a national historic district, you know, a small-scale neighborhood, you know, where there is a real inherent humanity, you know, connect to this neighborhood. And there is no reference to that, none. And, you know, so those are very important points. Economic mass, the scale of the building, and the fact that you're not only adding square footage, but you are not adding any manufacturing square footage with a dedicated business plan, with a dedicated statement that could guarantee that it's going to be a get-back to the community, you know? Those are the concern.
Okay, so I appreciate that. And actually, I think there's a little bit of common ground there. So we completely agree with everything you said about the value of manufacturing businesses and the jobs that they provide or employees that they hire. That is why we are partnering with Acme. If you've looked at this neighborhood, obviously you have, over many years, you've seen many of the businesses leave. There's business nearby that just put it, I got a call from a broker two weeks ago because they're selling their own business and they're moving out because it's harder. Acme. Acme is saying that they want to stay. Acme is growing in place. They're increasing their square footage by like 40% here. So to say that there's no growth here in this plan is not true. If you look at the alternatives for this site, the guy on the end of this, so no one is being displaced. The 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 site, the parcel on the end of the block, the guy, the last thing he tried to build there was a hotel and he had plans filed. So this is, this is not about anything other than we we want to find innovative ways, and we've been working with Acme for three years to find an innovative way to keep them. And this, and there has to be a financially viable way to do that, and that's what you are looking at in front of you.
I never spoke about displacement. I believe one of the major issue is converting an industrial zoning that should be exclusively dedicated, as it was at M31, exclusively dedicated to industrial manufacturing. But this way, we have turned entirely accept Acme, which is actually a partner because you already own 60% of the lot. So without Acme, there is no development, there is no merging of any other lot. So so it's not about displacing, nobody is displaced, but we have taken away the possibility of maintaining or developing other industrial spaces and maintaining small smaller lot. Acme could decide to go away, but the fact that lot were fraction is smaller lot is to could be available for other potential manufacturing business. They are not that big, they don't cover an entire block. You understand, this is a different logic. I'm not talking about displacing. So those are the economic logic which they're going to definitely push out every other possibility.
Understood.
I have another question. What is the percentage of the retail? Retail space?
Um, here, I have it.
Thirty-three thousand and eight hundred.
It's about 6% the ancillary commercial building.
And what kind of retail spaces are you contemplating?
Yeah, so if we go to this page, so you can see the retail in the sort of, I guess, pink color here. We envision predominantly sort of neighborhood focused retail. I think a lot of food and beverage, the goal is for it to be an amenity to the the tenants, commercial tenants in the building as well as the community in the neighborhood. Because at the end of the day, you know, we want we want the tenants to sort of, you know, be in a great environment. Amens and retail are a big part of that, and the and those retailers also need to serve the community in order to survive. So so it's going to kind of serve both.
So what kind of what kind of retail spaces are you are you planning to provide?
Well, so the these are, what we're going to build is it's not fully finished spaces, right? So we're going to deliver sort of a core shell, and then when, you know, when when there are tenants that are interested, we'll be negotiating with them, and each one of them will have sort of a specific build out and size and arrangement. And so we'll contribute to the cost of that, but it we really don't know what that is without knowing the actual businesses. I again, I do think that the most, the highest percentage, the space will go towards food and beverage. So that we've seen other interest at 25 Kent from sort of more like experiential, you know, sort of new art formats and things like that. But, you know, there could, there could be dry goods stores, you know, I'm not totally sure, but I think I think the the most, again, I really think the the highest concentration will be food and beverage.
And what's the largest space you could have?
Yeah.
Somebody thought of a big space.
No, I want, that's what I wanted to mention. If, as you can see on this plan, we've divided the commercial space into five different areas.
Right.
The largest one, the largest one is, hold on one, one second.
Probably like 10,000 square feet.
The largest one is 14,000 feet, and then the the next largest is 7,000, which is the on Gem Street. And then there's 5,000, which is the other one, sort of during the in the Plaza area. And then it goes down from there. One of them is 4,000, one's almost 2,000. So they're, they're really, they're not, you know, geared, there's no big box here. They're not geared to to large users. So so whatever comes in here are going to be, you know, relatively small users, and even those spaces can be divided.
Okay, why not let someone else ask some questions?
Okay, I've got some environmental questions that that I'd like to ask. The first one has to do with Local Law 97, which was passed by the City of New York in in 2019 as part of the Climate Mobilization Act. Are you guys, and it doesn't take effect till 2024, will this building be in compliance with that in terms of its carbon emissions?
So the so the intent would be that it is that it's going to be compliant. We are looking at all different types of resilience and sustainability strategies for the building. As we further develop it, that would be the intent.
Are there any you can describe now and let us know that they'll be part of that so that we can.
Sure, we're looking, I mean, so as a general rule, we're looking, we're targeting lead silver as an overall sort of holistic approach. We're, you know, we're in development right now, but we're looking at potentially solar voltagues on the roof. We're looking at enhanced glazing so that way, you know, to, we're looking at utilizing bird, bird friendly glazing, things like low voltage organic compounds for the construction materials. Pretty much, I mean, we're still composing our overall game plan, but in general, what we're doing is using lead as our guidance and local law 97 as our guidance for the energy, energy approach towards the building.
Well, local law 97 is a lot more stringent than lead.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're just saying that that's what we're overall target, but we will be meeting with, we'll be doing the local law 97 as well.
You will be, so it'll be in compliance with local law 97.
It's 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 going to be a rule by then.
Okay, okay, by the time you're building. Have you have you thought about using low carbon concrete as a building material?
We haven't gone into that detail, but we will, we'll certainly be studying that.
Yeah.
As well as steel.
Yeah, Toby Bryce sent me that, and we are, we are looking into it actively.
We definitely.
Again, looking into it, we're being asked to vote on you now, so that's, that's a little.
We don't, well, we're not in a position right now where we fully specified everything in the building. So it's not, we're not, we're not saying that because we're, it's just that we haven't made a final decision on the concrete that we'll use it. We have support being as carbon neutral as possible. We just haven't finalized the documentation to date.
Okay. How about your stormwater wastewater management? It would be great with a building of this scale for it all, everything to be handled on site.
Which is the intent.
It's the intent.
Yeah.
On the factory building as well, the factory process?
Yes, for both. Basically, we're going to follow the D P requirements for the best, for stormwater best management practices. That's what we intend on doing.
Are you going to memorialize these these intents?
Absolutely.
How are you going to do that?
I mean, I'm not sure what the best platform is, but I mean, I would imagine that we're going to be putting down our design intent. We could do it as a basis of design.
I don't know. And another issue that that I want to mention is, which I'm sure a building of this scale you would do, but I just to put it out there, that there would be a community liaison that can, first of all, that there would be, we'd be, we'd work out the defined hours, the pile driving and air monitoring systems, this is during construction, and the truck staging for the construction. And then we would hope that there would be a community liaison that can work with people in the, either through the community board or designate a community group to monitor that, make sure that it's in compliance with the plan that you set out.
And a newsletter that that people could could be, could, you know, ask you to send to them, people can come and they can apply to receive your newsletter.
Yeah, I mean, so yes, to both of those. And sorry, I'm just keeping my answers brief because I know there's a long line of people who want to opine on this.
So let me just say that anything that you tell us that you are willing to work with us on, we would ask you to put this in writing, to at least have it in writing as an agreement to us, to the Borough President, to the council person, council member, just to just to say this out upfront. Dale? Yes. I'm sorry. You have 20 people who wanted to speak on this item. Okay. Just want to let you know. All right, thanks.
Okay, I just have one more point and just start with the list of environmental issues which you guys mentioned. And so perhaps it's, I've been terrified because on New York Local Law 15, it's the bird friendly materials law, and you'd said you were looking into bird friendly glass, and then we just like. That would be part of that too.
One more thing, and then we can let people speak, at least one more thing for me. One concern that I've heard is that what's to say that Acme won't just leave in a couple of years? So I'm one, I ask if Acme would be willing to commit to staying along, you know, staying for a long term so that we don't have to have a, you know, a vacant fish factory?
I mean, we all want Acme to stay. If you look at this facility, no, you know, this is being built for Acme. You know, they're, each of us are making, you know, significant investments to make this actually happen. You know, it's, if if Acme leaves, that's a disaster when this is built, because it is built, it's purpose built for them, right? So I think, and and this is all done sort of pre baked so that, you know, Acme knows that this is like, this is the best deal for them. So, you know, I think they wouldn't, they wouldn't be going through all this, and Adam, you can obviously speak for yourself, but I mean, we wouldn't be going through all this if there are lower costs, other places to go to relocate the business. You know, I don't think they would be going through all this effort otherwise.
That's, that's exactly right. I mean, Jeff, we, as I said in my earlier remarks, you know, Brooklyn and Greenpoint specifically is an inherent part of our identity as a company, you know.
I think we understand that, but we have to move on, but I'm asking if you're willing to give a commitment.
I unfortunately, I could not, I can't predict the future, but as Jeff did, Jeff said, you know, this is being built for us. It's the best deal that we have available, and and I'm excited about it. It's what we want.
Okay, so I'm sorry to cut you off, but I, you know, we do have 20 people who want to speak. Is anyone else from the community board?
One.
One else.
Just one question, one, just one comment, the last comment.
Sure.
Which is, you're saying that that this is being built, that you, the Acme Fish is being built for for the development, but basically, the development is being built by by Acme's fish. I mean, it works both ways. I mean, they're getting an M, an M, M15 building, or they're being able to ask for it on the basis of building you this factory. And it's.
Dale, can I jump in since I I haven't spoke?
Sure.
Yeah, and this did, you know, come up at the last meeting, and if there's any way to memorialize reassuring that the manufacturing portion of the property will remain manufacturing. I know that we discussed, you know, like a restrictive, you know, deck or something in, you know, in in the deal, but city planning said that wasn't, you know, required. So if there was any way to memorialize it, you know, again, I know we spoke about IDA benefits, and with IDA benefits, that's a 25 year, you know, lock in in order to get those benefits. So if there's something, you know, that you guys could do to, you know, make the community at ease that we know that Acme wants to stay here, and this is not spec to live compared to, you know, like, say, 25 Kent. So, you know, this is owner occupied. They want to remain here. They want to grow here. So we we know that, but I think just to reassure, you know, the community that, you know, 10 years from now, you're not, you know, just going to, you know, move on and then, you know, flip the property. And then the, just one other question that, you know, like, we're we're receiving from the community as far as, you know, in the new process and the new plant, is there going to be additional measures for any type of, you know, equipment to reduce the, you know, the smells, you know, coming from Acme?
Here, I can give like a layperson's, so so here, let me, let me just take that one at a time, and thanks, Karen. So the the first thing is, we are on the same page regarding kind of the preservation of the space as industrial. We are working, you know, we're an active participant. We're at the, you know, table to figure out a solution that's palatable for the city or city planning and the council. So we're not hiding, we're having conversations with them to make everyone comfortable, because we're on the same page. The second thing is, you know, if you, I think, at least the vast majority, if not all the time, there really isn't a fish smell outside of the Acme factory today. That's with, you know, 50s era antiquated technology. Obviously, having an office building next door, that's something that, you know, that the perception or reality of odor is going to be really serious for our tenants as well. So we've been, you know, one of the key components of this has been to ensure that, you know, things like the factory is airtight with, you know, utilizing modern scrubbing equipment venting through the roof. So we believe, you know, with a high degree of conviction that there won't be any odor.
Dale, can I?
And then I just wanted, yeah, and then I just wanted to point out that, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but currently you are reusing the water, and I don't, I don't know how many gallons per per day that you guys save, but by reusing the gray water, if you want to talk about that, because I know that was brought up.
Yeah, so currently, we are reusing water in a cogeneration energy production. Was that what you're referring to? Yeah, so so that was, I guess, in the about 2004? Sounds about about right. We we put a cogeneration energy system on top of one of the buildings that recycles water used throughout the facility. The heat exchanger is able to provide, and we're actually energy independent off of the Con Ed grid. I don't know that we are necessarily going to follow that same thing in this project. I, we're in the fish business, we're not in the power business, and it has been, I'd say, much more challenging than perhaps we anticipated in 2004. But it's just to add comments on the waste, you know, I think our first goal with waste is to reduce, but currently, we're segregating all of our waste into organic cardboard recyclable material and and trash pursuant to Department of Sanitation and and, you know, I I think our model is going to remain the same, albeit having upgraded infrastructure to handle our different waste streams. But thank you, Karen.
I have a one final question.
Wait, I think Steve wanted to ask a question.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, just related to the the odor issue. Barry Exbal, who has his facility very near. Barry X. Ball, who has his facility very near Acme, he submitted testimony in writing to the board. And, you know, he sent him the praises of Acme, really enjoys, you know, he's had good interaction with you, et cetera. But he, he's had severe issues with exhaust from the existing plant where effects, you know, stinging eyes and just almost unbearable to work. And I've also just heard anecdotally, there's people walking around the neighborhood as far as McCarran Park who have just picked up the odor. So I, I just like, it's a critical issue to kind, you know, to close that up. So now I know you mentioned just you're going to have a lot of potential office workers are right above that. But, but right now in the present, it's also very, you know, the key. So I just feel like that, I hope you'll.
Yeah, one.
Thanks, Steve.
One final question. I had, hopefully to voice out other concern that a member of the community had about the future possibility that you could ask for a special permit and maybe ask for other uses of the community was fearing to have, like hotels or other uses that involve other entertainment business. Will you commit and memorialize that you will not ask in the future for such other special permits?
I'm not sure. Ray, I'm not sure what that means. Do you?
Yeah, you, right now you can't, you can't have a hotel without.
A special permit.
Getting a special permit, which means going through the process we're going through right now. So that's not something that, that's certainly not something that's being contemplated.
Yeah, the question was, will you, will you commit and, and not applying in the future for another special permit for other uses? So I know the uses you are asking today, but in five years, in seven years' time, you know, if you think that maybe an hotel will be, you know, a possibility, but the community was concerned about that.
Yeah, but, but, but we would have to come back to you for approval. So unless you, unless you don't trust yourself to turn us down, if we want to do that, which we're not, we're not saying we do, it would be up to the community and the, and the council member at that time.
So we understand that. We're just asking if you would give a commitment at this point now.
No.
Okay. Can we move on now to the, to the speakers?
Dale, just with the speakers, after the pre-registered speakers, I have four people who in the chat also wanted to speak. So after that first list, I have a few more. Just wanted to know.
Okay. Now, I will ask the speakers to please keep your, keep, keep what you're going to say concise. If we've already asked the questions or made the comments that you wanted to make because we didn't know some of these ahead of time, please just, you know, let us move on. Thank you. Okay, Marie, we can have the speakers.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for them. Some of them look like they may have dropped off the list.
Okay.
So I don't see Elaine Lane. I don't see her anymore on the list. Lennox Pratt? I don't see him either. Alisa Iberti? She's not there anymore. Alexis Alvarez? Alexis?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're, you're unmuted.
Hi, good evening, Chairperson. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the panel. My name is Alexis Alvarez. I'm a union carpenter and I speak in favor of the Acme Smoke Fish Project located at 10 White Avenue. I do believe Rubenstein should be applauded for their contribution, embracing the visionary plans and establish economic development goals and strategies in northern Brooklyn. The applicable, the applicable goals and objectives and actions and strategies are summarized as follows. The differences of this plan will support existing businesses and facilitate their expansion. It's also going to promote infill development. It's prioritized over new and possibly duplicative development at the city's edge. Most importantly though, the plan highlights the importance of nurturing Greenpoint, Brooklyn. And as a union member, I'd like to encourage you to please support this project because of the benefits it will provide for the community and residents, you know, like myself, that are also in the trades. So thank you very much for your time.
Kate Nablotowski? Kate Nablotowski? Kate? You're unmuted.
Okay, can you hear? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, hi. I would like to know why the building is so tall. And I would like to know if any documentation and numbers have been shown that prove that this amount of space is needed in order to subsidize the expansion of Acme, which I'm in favor of the expansion of Acme. But I think that in order to legitimize incredible height, which is out of context for the area, that they should show in writing and prove that it's financially necessary. Otherwise, I don't think this should be approved. I also think that this is going to be a domino effect from this parcel and for other parcels. So unless it's made lower or shown that it's absolutely necessary, I don't think that it should be approved. It needs to go back to the drawing board. Thank you. So that's a question, actually. Have they, have they shown any proof that it needs to be so massive? Thank you.
Next person is Kenyatta Dunlap. She left the listing. Maryam Kelly, I'm sorry, who's that?
Hi.
Hi, Karen. Yeah, okay.
Hi, my name is Maryam Kelly. I am here to testify in favor of the Acme project. I am an Acme employee and I also live in Community Board One. Just wanted to say that working at Acme has been reassuring. They've been a family owned business for years. And the time I've been there, it's been nothing but growth. I've lived in the community for over 15 years. I've seen the community change. And I think this project will fit in amazingly with the dynamic of the neighborhood with what's going on right now. As I walk every day to work, knowing that this project goes through gives me and my coworkers that reassurance that Acme isn't going anywhere, that we do have a future and that we will be, that we will be part of the Acme history that's been a part of Brooklyn and Greenpoint for so long. Also, there's a few points that they did mention. I mean, as an employee, I walk through the neighborhood even when I'm not going to work passing by. We don't have any of the odors or some of the complaints. I do feel like Acme is going to give everything it's best to make sure that this project is great for the community and for the business as well. So, you know, it's served this community in the past, and I'm hoping it gets approval so that we can continue to serve the community and continue to grow as I've been able to witness and seen it grow for these past five, three to five years already. And thank you so much.
Next person is Brian Brady. Next person is Jamar Williams. He's no longer there. Edward Lacy? Edward? Edward? Edward Lacy? I am muted. You, you can speak. Moving on. Ruben Cologne?
Hello?
Ruben?
Hello?
Ruben, you, you, you're unmuted.
Yes, my name is Ruben Cologne. I live in Brooklyn. I also serve on my community board. I know how hard it can be. Thank you for hosting this meeting. I am also representative of thousands of union carpenters which live and work in Brooklyn. Hundreds of these hardworking men and women live and reside in northern Brooklyn within reasonable distance of the proposed project. Some are present here today to speak in favor of the proposal. Acme Smoke Fish has been one of the remaining longtime union employees within this community. For decades now, they have provided gainful employment to generations of workers. If their proposal is approved, thousands of jobs will be created. Hundreds more will be gainfully employed in the construction phase, translating into meaningful employment with health benefits for union carpenters whose families are struggling through the, through the current unprecedented health crisis. It is on behalf of these families that I implore the members of Community Board 11 and 1 to exercise their advisory power and vote in favor of the Castle families proposal for the greater good of this community. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to make this statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Jody Ann Beatty. Jody? Jody?
Yes, thank you. Hello and good evening, Community Board members and neighbors. My name is Jody Ann Beatty and I'm a lifelong resident and have been a homeowner in Greenpoint, Brooklyn for the last 53 years, just a few blocks from Acme Fish. I am also a business agent of the New York City District Council of Carpenters with a union membership of more than 20,000 in New York City alone. Tonight, I would like to encourage my neighbors to support the Acme Smoked Fish expansion being developed by Rubenstein Partners. The commercial space this will create supports the continued growth of innovation economy businesses that Brooklyn has become known for, and it will generate up to 2,000 jobs. Approving this plan will send an important signal that Brooklyn and New York City are open for business. The team has been engaging with community stakeholders for more than two years to arrive at a plan that not only keeps a lifelong family business in Greenpoint for over 100 years, but also benefits the neighborhood as well as the residents that greatly need good jobs. The design by an award-winning architect captures the entrepreneurial spirit with the context of the Greenpoint manufacturing area, improving the present industrial experience by creating open spaces and rationalizing access to manufacturing facilities, including new loading docks. As a lifelong resident of Greenpoint and a member of the carpenters union, I have raised my family here and will continue to fight for what the neighborhood and residents need to build an economically strong and vibrant community. We need businesses like Acme Fish to continue to build this community economically. Greenpoint's economic, Greenpoint's economy was built along the waterfront with longshoremen like my father and uncles, who worked those ships to deliver everything from cotton to cars throughout New York and the surrounding areas. Greenpoint's waterfront may not be what it used to be in the terms of jobs and employment, but now consists of more high-rise housing built by scrupulous developers that cheat the system via tax fraud than Greenpoint can handle. What we need here is jobs to support the people that have stayed to contribute to the neighborhood and to those that will move here to support the same. Thank you for your time and consideration in favor of Rubenstein Partners' development of the Acme Fish Company.
Thank you.
Next person is Travis Talmage. Let's see. Travis, you're unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'll introduce myself. I own a local business called Bath House on North 10th Street. And I want to speak in support of Acme's project here with Rubenstein. You know, I'll kind of sum up my thoughts on the project. We talk a lot in our own business about win-wins, win-wins with our customers, with the community, with everybody at large. And to me, this project seems like the ultimate win-win because you keep a business like Acme that really has meant so much to the neighborhood and really creates the authenticity of this neighborhood. And you do a lot to stimulate for the local economy, which for us would be just so meaningful and I think for the greater community. So we think this is a great project. We love Acme. It's exactly why we want to be in this neighborhood, to be near businesses like this. And we just can't show enough support for this project.
Thank you.
The next person is Peter Barrington. Peter?
My name is Peter Barrington. I'm a union carpenter and I fully support the Rubenstein project at the Acme Smoke Fish Project. I believe this economic development is a shining example of how Brooklyn can move forward with new development. The 2,000 or so good jobs the project will create will help the people of Brooklyn and help New York City's recovery from this pandemic and economic crisis. Thank you for letting me testify.
You're welcome.
Sinead Wadsworth is the next speaker. Sinead?
One, hi, good evening everyone. My name is Sinead Wadsworth. I am a council representative for the New York City District Council of Carpenters located in northern Brooklyn. I'm also a Community Board Nine member as well as a committee member for the 87th district. Tonight, I would like to offer my strong support for the project. Because the COVID has closed many doors and has forced real estate developers to rethink development. And I commend Rubenstein for all their leadership and resilience. You know, a few comments were made earlier in regards to guarantees that Acme Smoke Fish would stay in the neighborhood of Greenpoint. However, you know, with the success they have for over 100 years, they could easily pick anywhere else to go, you know, and that's not an easy thing right now. After the pandemic, a lot of developers and a lot of businesses left New York City. So when you talk about developers developing right now and taking a chance and companies expanding and taking a chance, you know, who knows what will be in 10 years? Who knows what will be tomorrow? You know, the city can shut down again. So with all this in mind, I would ask that neighbors and community stakeholders support Acme because they've been around for over 100 years. And that's my testimony. Thank you so much. Have a good night, y'all.
Thank you.
Next person is Tamara Rivera. Tamara?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. You can speak.
Good evening, Chairperson and Community Board members. My name is Tammy Rivera and I'm a New York City representative, the New York City District Council of Carpenters. And I'm here today to testify in favor of the Acme Smoke Fish development on 30 Gem Street. With Acme surviving four generations and like any long-lasting business, a makeover is always needed to persevere. This new development will provide new working opportunities. This new development will provide new working opportunities, which is desperately needed in the outer boroughs like Brooklyn today. It is beneficial to know that Brooklyn is being redeveloped, not just with housing, but in the commercial market as well. If this U-Lerp goes through, then let this development be built with workers that are professionals and have careers in construction, instead of hiring irresponsible contractors that we as community citizens end up paying our hard-earned tax dollars to. Let alone, many of these contractors transport these workers in vans from everywhere but the five boroughs. I know this because I am an organizer in the area standard department, and it's my job to know this. My organization has been working diligently recruiting from all boroughs to our pre-apprenticeship program called Building Works. At the end of this program, this free program, these men and women will have a construction career as a carpenter. I myself have been in the union as a carpenter for 27 years, thanks to a pre-apprenticeship program called Non-Traditional Employment for Women. The mayor has recently implemented a project labor agreement on upcoming development as well. So let's keep Brooklyn alive and thriving for our future Brooklynites, with not jobs, but careers. And let Acme Smoked Fish continue being successful by ramping up their business with a makeover. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leah, you're unmuted.
I am, terrific. Hi, this is Leah Archibald, I'm the Executive Director of Evergreen. Thanks so much for allowing me to testify before you. I've distributed a written copy of my testimony, which goes into greater detail, and you guys can read that on your own. I just wanted to make a few brief comments tonight. You know, as you know, our organization has been working with businesses in industrial north Brooklyn for almost 40 years. And, you know, in recent years, one of the challenges for our manufacturing businesses has been they're outgrowing their space. But because Brooklyn is such an expensive place for a manufacturer to be, they kind of have no options other than to build up. So we have been advocating for years and years, on behalf of our local manufacturers, to work with the city, Department of City Planning, to try and figure out if we can get a new tool or two into their land-use toolbox to allow our manufacturers to build up. You know, we all went through the 25k proposal, that was one way, but that was speculative, right? It was a if we build it, they will come sort of situation. You know, with the Gem Street project, we've got a multi-generational in-place union manufacturer that needs to expand. And they have other options, right? They have other facilities, they could expand elsewhere. I'm delighted that they want to expand here onsite in the community that they've been a part of for generations. And a, an expansion of this nature requires some creative solutions. And what Acme and the Rubenstein partnership have brought forward are just that. Because, you know, the Department of City Planning is limited with the tools in the toolbox for building up, we've got to kind of create new solutions to this, and this proposal does exactly that. You know, we're delighted to be in support of it. We know Acme is an excellent employer, we know that they supply high-quality working-class jobs for the local community, and we would very much like to see them succeed. So thanks so much. And we look forward to, you know, partnering with all, with the community board, with the developers, with Acme, to try and forge a project that allows them to really invest in their future here in Greenpoint for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know where she went. Jane Clark? Jane Clark?
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everybody, thank you for letting me speak, I'll make it brief. I'm a resident of the historic neighborhood of Greenpoint. I'm also someone who has enjoyed Acme Fish for many years. Fish Fridays is a favorite highlight of our week. I'm also somebody who walks and rides my bicycle along those streets regularly on my way to McCarran Park or various other places. I'm not speaking as an architect, I'm not speaking as a union member, I am speaking as somebody who is living somewhere where you feel like the buildings are kind of growing around you to a point at which you feel claustrophobic. I want, we all want Acme to survive, we think Acme is wonderful, and you treat your employees well, you hire good people, and you create a wonderful product. But I don't understand why the building has to be so high in order to make it economically viable for you to expand. We want you to stay in Greenpoint, we don't want to feel blackmailed that if we don't give you what you want, you'll move out somewhere else. I hope that you wouldn't do that, but I would request that you reconsider the height of the building that you're requesting to put there. And if this board grants that, how many more buildings will then also be able to go up as high as that? I would ask you to reconsider exactly what alternatives there are for you to be able to expand here in Greenpoint and to do it without taking up any more skyspace. That's it from me, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Randy Pierce? Randy, you're unmuted.
Great, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
There's an echo, I don't know. If you can do anything. I don't know where it's coming from.
Maybe if everyone else is unmuted.
Can you guys hear me?
Can you guys hear me?
Okay. Sorry about this feedback. Randy Pierce, President, CEO of the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce. First of all, thank you so much for having me this evening. You know, we are the borough's largest business association, and we're very much in favor of this project. As an economic development project, it's about as good as it gets. Preserving a legacy manufacturer that's pretty much synonymous with Brooklyn is first and foremost important, but the 2,000 additional commercial jobs that it will create in response to our changing economy, I know one of my colleagues from the carpenters' union referenced the creative economy jobs. These are the types of jobs that Brooklynites need, especially coming out of this pandemic. So this project sort of ticks off all the boxes from our perspective as positive economic development that creates jobs and opportunities for Brooklynites, both in the community and elsewhere. So kudos to Acme, kudos to Rubenstein. And I think this is a precedent-setting type of economic development project. So we did submit some written testimony, so I'll leave it at that. But thank you once again to the Community Board for hearing me out.
Thank you. That is the last person that I had that signed up to speak. I don't know if you want to address someone that's in the chat?
Yeah. Yeah, Marie, there were Catherine Thompson and Luke Olson in the chat expressed interest in speaking.
Who was that? You said the first person?
Catherine Thompson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you so much. And thank you, members of the Community Board, you guys are amazing. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Catherine Thompson, I'm the co-chair of the Friends of Bushwick Inlet Park. I lived on Callier Street in Greenpoint for 25 years. I'm a close friend and neighbor of Acme Fish, I go there every week to get my fish at Fish Friday. And I consider Acme to be a very special neighbor. But to go back to rezoning, in 2005, as part of the 197A rezoning the Greenpoint Williamsburg waterfront, the 27-acre Bushwick Inlet Park was promised. And at that time, it was planned, and after months of community scoping, 15 years later, today, in 2020, only seven acres have been built, most of the park remains an industrial wasteland. And many thousands of new residents have moved into the neighborhood, development is not slowing down. In fact, just north of the Bushwick Inlet, an enormous development called Callier Place is going up in record time, they're having over 1,000 new apartments, including a new street. But still, our promised park has yet to materialize. The city has yet to commit to fully funding and building out Bushwick Inlet Park. So a U-Lerp upzoning variance is real estates might assist touch, whereby a stroke of pen with these legislative moves, a value of a piece of property is increased tremendously. Great wealth has been created and continues to be, and yet the community's amenity promised in 2005 that Bushwick Inlet Park, after 15 years, remains unfunded and unrealized. The Acme Fish expansion is very close to Bushwick Inlet Park and will impact it. The Shadow Study demonstrates that its shadow will touch the park. And also, you know, by bringing in lots of 2,000 new workers into the area, there will be a lot of new users of the potential park that doesn't quite exist yet. Clearly, the city more than ever needs to honor their commitment to fully build out Bushwick Inlet. I would say to our city planners and folks reviewing this U-Lerp process that the 197A plan has failed to provide the promised park to the community. And now is the time to reevaluate this failure and look for remedies.
Please summarize.
Okay, the spot zoning and text amendment rezonings requests will keep happening without investing in the neighborhood community infrastructure. And I'm just offering, asking that maybe in this U-Lerp somehow that the Bushwick Inlet Park will be considered as a part of, you know, maybe Acme can help invest in that local park. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chesler, did you see anyone else?
Yeah, there's three more, Luke Olson, and then Katie Denny Horowitz, and then Nicole Summy, S A M.
They did not sign up to speak, so that's, you know, that's why I'm running into a problem here finding them.
Okay, Nicole and Katie claimed that they did sign up, but whatever.
Everyone who I read, I had the email from before the meeting started, and actually when the meeting was underway. So let me just see if I can...
Did Corrie Cantin want to speak too? I saw before, but I'm not sure.
She posted a comment.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chesler?
Yes.
Who was that first person?
Luke Olson.
Luke, okay, let me see if he's in here. He's not on the, oh, there he is, okay. Luke?
Hello?
You're unmuted, you have two minutes.
Great, I'm on the clock, time to shine. Thank you so much, y'all, for putting in the hours on this and the time, and both to the board, the presenters, and everyone who spoke. It's a long night, and I appreciate it, I appreciate you letting me speak. My name's Luke Olson, I serve on the board at North Brooklyn Neighbors. Some of these are comments, some of these are questions, and I know it's not formally a Q and A or anything like that, but at some point, would like to see these answered. I think that, you know, Acme has been a really great neighborhood partner in many ways, and does a lot of great work in the community. And with that in mind, just thinking about, kind of listening to some of those concerns about the height. I think that, I think as someone had mentioned a while ago on the call, that a lot of people can get a lot of things they want out of this proposal, and I think there's been a very strong call for good jobs, good local jobs from our union members and business leaders earlier. And I also think that many people are asking that we have those things with not quite the height that is being proposed. So I just want to back up that, I also wanted to say that there has been mention of a training program with a nonprofit going forward. Just want to see what that might look like, and also asking that there be access to community spaces. Again, lots kind of in flux right now with COVID, but it's nonprofits, or we're kind of struggling to find spaces and places where they could hold meetings with community members, with one another, with other organizations. That would be a really great usage of the space, I know that's somewhere to work in. And I also raise the concern of, I see in those renderings, really great usage of public space, but wondering, you know, Acme delivering all over to the city has those trucks, and kind of seeing, I know this may be down the road, no pun intended, or pun intended, but what the space in front of the building will look like in terms of those trucks going in and out? And with there being more open space, there being more kids around, and dogs and people walking, and elderly folks. So some comments in there, some questions in there, and thank you again for your time. Did I make two minutes? Did I do it?
Yes, you did. Mr. Chesler?
That's Katie Denny Horowitz.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, you're unmuted.
Okay, great. So yes, I did sign up earlier, but it's great because, you know, I was able to get the kids in bed while some other folks spoke. So this is actually perfect timing, so thank you for letting me talk. So it's Katie Denny Horowitz, I'm the Executive Director of the North Brooklyn Parks Alliance. And, you know, I can echo Catherine Thompson's call for supporting Bushwick Inlet Park. I've been living in the neighborhood for almost 20 years, I actually used to live on Banker Street. And part of the reason why, you know, I'm really interested in this project is because of the improvements that Luke was talking about to the open space in the plazas. You know, as the North Brooklyn Parks Alliance is really looking at systems, park systems in the area and connectivity between parks, a site like Acme is sort of central to, and almost equidistant between McCarran and the future Bushwick Inlet Park. And it presents an opportunity to be able to create a more walkable and pleasurable experience on the streetscape and utilizing the open spaces and plazas and walkthroughs that they're proposing. And so I look at this as a perspective from, you know, someone walking on the ground, opening up the space, and sort of countering an earlier comment about sort of feeling overwhelmed on the streets. I think in fact, you know, historically, walking through the area, you know, sometimes it is difficult to get from point A to point B, and you certainly don't feel like you're surrounded by two of the largest parks in north Brooklyn when you're walking down those streets. And I think being able to open up the opportunity to make the Greenpoint of Williamsburg neighborhoods think being able to open up the opportunity to make the Greenpoint and Williamsburg neighborhoods more of a, more welcoming to those spaces so that we can not only use one of our parks that happens to be down the block, but actually walk from one to another in a safe and pleasurable way. And I think that, you know, I think that we can make it safe for families, and I think that this project would be able to accomplish that. So that's what I had to say. So thank you.
Next is Nicole Sami, S-A-M-I-I.
Where are these people signing up?
I don't know.
Well, I don't have her. Okay, she's... Okay, I unmuted her.
Yes, hello. Good evening. My name's Nicole Sammy, and I'm a representative of 32BJ. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my union to express our support for the proposed project. 32BJ is the largest property service union in the country, representing 85,000 property service workers in New York City, including more than 1,500 who live in...
Hello?
32BJ supports response... Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. We support responsible developers who invest in the communities where we build. And I'm happy to report that Rubenstein Partners and Acme Smoked Fish have made a credible commitment to creating prevailing wage, building service jobs at this site. This commitment is an investment in the community by providing wages and benefits that give working families opportunity for upward mobility and security. We estimate that this development will lead to the creation of 18 new janitorial jobs, approximately eight security jobs. It is not often that a company like Acme Smoked Fish stay in New York City, and we are so pleased that a company with deep roots in the community is able to expand and develop their facilities while providing opportunities for the community. We are in full support of this project, and we have full confidence that Rubenstein and Acme Smoked Fish will be a responsible employer and presence in the community. And for these reasons, we respectfully urge you to approve this rezoning. Thank you.
All right, last one is Larry Rothschild. And then there's one comment that I want to read back.
Larry, you're unmuted.
Great. Thanks so much. Good evening, everyone. I'm the Director of Workforce Development for St. Nick's Alliance, and we run a local training program for construction skills training. And we've been talking with Rubenstein about developing, training for the construction project, for the development project, with a goal of bringing in at least 25 construction laborers as part of our seven-week construction skill build training. So we're excited for the opportunity to hire, train and hire locally on the project, as we've done on many other projects in the community. And we think this is a great opportunity to build a career track for our local participants on the project.
Okay, and then, Marie, that's it on the speakers, and then from the chat, what happened? Cory Canton. I'd like to know, it's possible for Acme to meet their goals with a smaller, more contextual building. While I would like Acme to stay in the community, this opens up Pandora's box in terms of other requests. We need to think hard as a community about what standards rezoning should meet. If we approve Acme's request, what happens next? We need to consider our zoning decisions on a larger basis and not one project at a time. That's it.
I have no other speakers. Dell, I believe that's all the people who signed up to speak.
Dell, you have to unmute yourself.
Sorry, I muted myself because there was an echo. I thought maybe I would help. Richard Barak from the Borough President's Office would like an opportunity to give us the dates of the hearings that will be held by the Borough President on the applications before us tonight.
Am I unmuted?
You can unmute yourself. Yes, you're unmuted.
Okay, perfect. So it's not 100% yet, but expect December 21st as the date for the Borough President's virtual public hearing. There'll be four other items on the agenda, so we haven't set the order of the agenda. But the notice will be out in a day or two. And it's a WebEx function where you can view the hearing, and then through the chat, you could note whether you'd like to speak or not. And just make sure, since there are multiple items, that you tell us exactly which item you'd like to speak on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that is the end of the public hearing, and so we can proceed with our, with our Land Use Committee meeting. Do we have to redo... Marie, can we just proceed? Marie? Hello, can anyone hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Jerry, Marie, can we just proceed now to our committee meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Have a nice night, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, so are the Acme Fish people, are you still here?
I am still here, but I was preparing to leave.
Okay, because I'm wondering if committee members might have some questions to ask you after all of these, all of this testimony.
I have one question.
And I have a couple of questions too. So go ahead, Trina.
I'm just, I'm gonna ask Jeff to stay on because while I can answer questions about Acme, our business, I think some of the questions about the development, Jeff should...
Yes, I see Jeff. I see Jeff there.
Okay, great.
No worries.
Okay, Trina.
Let me go ahead. My question is for Jeff, which has to do with the zoning. And I know that M12 was not an available tool in your building because, because whatever the 25 Kent, the 14 blocks where it was available, that you're building, the development site's not in it. But had it been available, and M12, given that you have your, you have the manufacturing client there, unlike 25 Kent where it's speculative, could you have made the numbers work with the building and not gone to the scale that you're going to with M15, building M15 out to its greatest extent?
Yeah, so the answer is no. We concluded, not just we, but, you know, after there was discussion with Steve and others over a couple of years where we were not, we elected to pursue the M15 as a result of, you know, the basically Acme's composition in the building, the need for a separate Acme building, and the total density, which, I mean, it's only .2 FAR, but that was, you know, in terms of making the project viable, that was important to us.
So the cost of building out the separate building within your building made it that much more expensive, so you had to go up to the M15?
Yes.
And there's, there've been so many questions about the scale, and you've done, and Katie Napoltersky asked about the numbers. And are we just to go on blind faith that you're telling the truth, that you need to build a building of that scale in order to make the numbers work? Is there anything you can share with us that indicates the numbers are true?
Well, I just want to add a point about Acme, and then Jeff, you should answer that question. Part of our requirement is we did not want anything to be above our site. So that we, and that was not available. Jeff had to end up recapturing that FAR in increased height in the other part of the building. That was our request, and he's such obliged. So, I mean, Jeff, maybe you can elaborate on...
Yeah, I mean, I think there are two things, right? There's the height, and then there's the overall square footage. So in terms of the height, Adam's absolutely right. I mean, they're both related, obviously, but Adam's right where, you know, we can't put anything on the vast majority of the Acme facility. It's got to be sort of elevated for venting. At the same time, on the southeast part of the site, you have the open plazas. And so you have a large site, but you're constrained in terms of where you can mask the building. And, I mean, we could have gone way higher, as you, you know, see with, you know, the Willie Veil and others, which we didn't want to do. So we tried, and then basically the top pieces sort of stepped back. So from street level, it actually breaks down the scale. That said, I mean, look, Acme, just to share numbers, you know, this is a, somewhere between a $35 to $40 million loss for the development to build that facility. Yes. So, I mean, we're, I guess you will have to take my word for that, but I assure you that no one in their right mind would ever build this facility on its own.
And I can add that we never did it ourselves because we couldn't afford it, and it wouldn't have made sense, which is why in 2013, we ended up building a second plant in Wilmington, North Carolina, that was expensive for Wilmington. You know, building a food manufacturing plant is expensive, as Jeff has now found out. I think that, you know, all those ingredients go into the need for his subsidy. Frankly, we've taken his word for it, too.
I have a question, Dell.
Yes?
Yeah, I, you know, I just, I, you know, I love the idea of, you know, bringing in so many new jobs to the neighborhood. But that is potentially, you know, 2,000 people who will be in the neighborhood during the day, you know, flexing our infrastructure. And so, I don't know, I've just, and just, you know, considering the, you know, the granted investment in upgrading the Acme facility, but it's a great opportunity for you guys that, you know, someone, I think it was Luke, mentioned that we're, we really in need of a community facilities in the neighborhood, meeting spaces. We need, you know, the spaces for like affordable 3K school programs, senior center. And the other side is, you know, our Parks Department is chronically underfunded even before the pandemic. It's, you know, compared to the national average for percentage of the city budgets, New York is always chronically low. Consider, you know, we need, you know, more Parks personnel taking care of this infrastructure that workers would use and residents would use. That, you know, is potential consideration that you ponder.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. And we, so the impacts and, you know, the additional people on site, I think, not sure exactly, but that's all obviously in the environmental. As far as, you know, parks, we, you know, I'm involved with North Brooklyn Parks Alliance, and, you know, meet regularly with Toby and Catherine. And, you know, that's something that we have shared alignment in. And, you know, the issue of, you know, there are two parcels of Bushwick Inlet Park that are currently funded, designed, approved, we're ready to go, and are, you know, nothing's happening. There's, you know, there's a lot of work to be done. We have every intention of working, continuing to work with the community and the respective sort of, you know, nonprofit organizations to, you know, see what, you know, how can we move that ball forward? And we anticipate, you know, being very active stakeholders in that respect.
But would the, this is Dell, would the applicants be willing to make a commitment to give some kind of help to the Bushwick Inlet Park? And what about having some space for that, that the community, for things that the community could use? For instance, what, the kinds of things that Steve brought up, early childcare facilities, meeting space for the community? What was the other thing you said, Steve?
Senior Center.
Senior Center. We need these things. Is there a way to promise us some kind of space that we could use for either an early childcare facility, a senior center, or something else that the community would need?
Yeah, so I'm going to be careful in how I answer this, but, you know, I would first say that we're, you know, we are constructing 22,000 square feet of open space plazas. So that is something that is going to be utilized by everybody. You know, we have, you know, there have been various initiatives. And so in addition to that, we are also looking at various programs or initiatives where we and our, you know, prospective, you know, tenants, hopefully, once they show up, would take advantage of for local hiring, and, you know, and that may involve space, it may not involve space, things, you know. But I think that we also need, you know, for instance, we tried to get the firehouse up and running, and for some reason, you know, the city has defaulted on that, too. And so we need to, it can't just be, we're, we're happy to be, you know, partner with everybody and continue those conversations. But I think there's, it's just very complicated as far as, you know, we need the city to cooperate as well.
But you're asking, understand, you're asking us to ignore the comments from the community that are, that are opposed to the height and the substantial bulk of this application. So we're asking you to make a commitment. And so far, we haven't been able to do a commitment for anything, a commitment to stay for X number of years, a commitment to give, set aside some space that the community could use, perhaps for any one of these things, meeting space, senior center, early childhood care facility, giving a commitment or to give some money or to help with the, with the park.
Dell, we do, we, for instance, you know, we partner with the park, with local park organizations already. I mean, and we continue, we anticipate continuing to do that. I don't, we're, we're listening, we're willing to listen to any idea in the right forum. I think we are, there is, we have said that there will be, there is a commitment to develop a mechanism for the space to remain industrial, which is the only thing that we can do on that space.
So you are willing to commit that, to have, you would be, you would agree to have some kind of a restriction in your deed to say that the space would remain industrial?
Yeah, the problem is that we've been working on this with the city for a while, but the problem is no one, there's no counterparty. There's no mechanism right now that the city is comfortable with. So I'm not, I'm not, we are actively working on it, and there will be a mechanism.
As far as the park goes, you know, from my perspective, nothing would make us happier than seeing the Bushwick Inlet Park come to fruition. I don't, you know, I don't really know what we can do to make that happen, aside from putting a shovel in the ground, you know. And we're all in support of the same thing, like the community is, you know, to the extent that we can partner to... You know, to the extent that we can partner to make that happen, I mean, we're all, we're all in. Like I said, that would be just a benefit to the project.
What about setting aside a space that the community could, would be available to for community use?
We're not, we can, we can go back and evaluate, evaluate it, but we're not in a position to commit to that tonight.
Dell, it's Richard.
Yes, Richard.
More clarity, like are you looking for after hour space for certain kind of functions? The size of the space, I know childcare and daycare, a senior center was brought up. Obviously, it's kind of hard to get city contracts for those things these days. And then if you got childcare that was market rate for people of very high income, is that something that you would find satisfactory as a community? So I think being real explicit over the months of the U L R process would be helpful.
So we, of course, as you know, Richard, we have to, we have, we have to present this to the community board tomorrow. So, are you suggesting that we could continue to explore this with the developer while the U L R process is going on?
So there's two ways. Obviously, the board is officially done, right? When the board votes.
Right.
If the board is part of a dialogue with the community through the U L R process, it could report out at various phases, you know, whether, you know, because now it's highly focused, right? So it wouldn't be an official board position, but it would be helping the community in its dialogue as you approach the council.
So how could we do this? I'm not, I'm just not understanding.
So whoever is championing these kind of needs, you know, it needs to be understood better, right?
Yes.
You know, so again, community use of a space and, you know, like, are there spaces in the building that beyond, like, I don't know if there's, what, there may be common spaces for office tenants? Like, is there a common space that many office tenants would be reserving? A conference room or something that after hours could be accessible where it's not taken away from the normal usage of the paying clients that are using office space? You know, it's better understanding what the needs are.
Right.
You know, in the next several minutes, you're not going to know that.
Right, although there, right, there was a request for that, actually. I think North Brooklyn did ask whether there would be this kind of after hour space for, for community groups or community members to meet. So I wonder if there would be that kind of a situation that we could at least start a conversation on.
But even understanding how many people they were envisioning in such a room.
Yeah, I think, Richard, I think those are great, you know, ideas and especially in terms of a format to, I do think it's going to require additional discussion. You know, we can, what I would be willing to do is to continue this conversation with the community board and the borough president. And, you know, to get, you know, we will listen to any specific kind of requests, but just to say like, oh, we need a senior center is like, just very, I'm just not even sure where to start with it, especially right now.
And again, if there are not agencies that are operating in a facility that are being kicked out of the space, it's not like if you provide it, anybody comes.
Right.
Energy that makes that work.
Right. And what about the, the use of local construction workers and local people for, during your construction phase? It seems to me you've shown some initiative in working with St. Nick's Alliance.
Yeah, that is our sort of partner in that respect. And, you know, we anticipate, you know, we're going to sponsor trainings for, you know, workforce trainings for local individuals to work on the job site.
Okay. And with respect to the complaints of the odors coming out, are you, what, how, will you not be able to deal with that if, with the new building and whatever kinds of exhaust systems and systems that you put in?
Steve, oh yeah, go ahead, Adam.
No, I mean, I think that is entirely the intent. This is part of the facility upgrade that has been, I don't want to say difficult for us to achieve, but one thing begets another, begets another, begets another. And so we have solved those problems, or I should say dealt with those issues on a local level. When neighbors have issues, we adjust practices. We'll either change hours of smoking. But, but I do believe, as evidenced by some of our newer facilities in other areas, that upgrading equipment as part of this project is going to deal with a lot of the odorous emissions. One of the other complaints was round, was around waste. I mean, we currently have a refrigerated, a refrigerated space for organic waste that mitigates the odor to, I guess, as much as possible and we increase sanitation to kind of deodorize that. And I think for the most part, it's dealt with. Is it 100%, 365, you know, 24/7? No, because that bay opens and the waste gets hauled and then gets cleaned out and et cetera. But, but I think that, that it can only get better. It really can't get any worse. And I think it's not so bad right now.
And what about the loading docks? Some people were concerned about the truck traffic.
Yeah, so, so this was kind of in the footnotes of the presentation. We actually have pre-existing plans to relocate our distribution to New Jersey. So our trucks and truck loading are going to be coming out of New Jersey, which will create, also free up space for us to increase our manufacturing capacity. The plan is to have two dedicated loading bays where trucks would be able to back into a proper dock. And we would not, we would reduce the street traffic of our own delivery trucks by relocating without losing any jobs because, you know, our growth, we have plans to continue our growth trajectory and every, you know, I expect all these jobs to stay and if not grow.
Okay, Dell, can I just, yes, currently usually on roughly a dozen or more trucks that stage at night on Gem Street.
Correct.
So under this, this plan that you just spoke of, will that, you know, severely reduced or go away or?
Yes. Yeah, and our, you know, that may happen as early as Q4 '21. Unfortunately, the construction of our distribution facility in New Jersey has been delayed, so that transition has been delayed. But, but yeah, I mean, we expect to reduce the street traffic tremendously.
Okay. I have no more questions. I don't know if anyone else has. So then maybe we'll just proceed to, to vote on these applications. So Trina?
Yes.
Did we, if you'd like, we could go back to the beginning here. You have a motion that you wanted to put, put out for us to vote on for the landmarks.
Right, so going, going back to the 98 Milton Street, what, what we came up with was a motion to approve the proposal with modifications. And, but first, we would acknowledge the thoughtful restoration. But, but what we'd like to do is make the rear design more harmonious by, one, changing the staircase from a spiral staircase to a more traditional staircase. And number two, changing the round window to a window more in line with the windows similar on the upper two floors. And additionally, we'd like to ask the architect to reexamine the historical image and accordingly change, possibly change the two, change two, two over two windows in the front back as opposed to the four over fours that are in the current proposal.
Also, Trina, something, something we had said to, it was about the other window to create more alignment with assisting opening at the back. Not only the round, we spoke about that, I believe.
So it was aligning?
Yeah, because they create this large glass opening, both on the basement level, on the basement, yeah, ground floor level.
And they're not in line with one another?
I mean, it felt a little bit, this can be harmonized more. I don't know exactly, I don't want to say either, it's their job, but definitely.
Okay, and aligning, okay.
And creating more of an alignment of the windows in the rear.
We're happy to look at it. We'll, we'll see if we can't make it feel more, more concordant.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comments.
Wait, we have to vote?
We have to vote.
So I second, I second the motion.
Okay.
So all in favor, or do we have to do a roll call?
Yes, we do.
Okay, there you go.
I have a sheet prepared.
Okay, thank you. Are you ready? You have your motion and everything?
Yeah, I just read it and it's been seconded.
Yeah, it's been seconded. Okay. Dell T?
Yes.
Vera? She's not present. McKeva?
Yes.
Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Chesla?
Yes.
Drinkwater? Not present. Indig? Not present. Kaminsky? Not present. Katz? Not present. Leibowitz? Not present. Mr. Michele?
Yes.
Rabbi Niedeman? Rabbi Niedeman, can you unmute yourself? Not present. Karen Neves?
Yes.
Mr. Sofa? Mr. Solano? Mr. Vega?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Weidberg?
Yes.
Mr. Weiser? Not present. He was here. He's not, he's no longer listed.
All right.
Mr. Berger?
I'm here.
What's your vote on the motion for the landmarks?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
There were 10 members voting. All in favor, yes.
You failed, you failed to meet quorum.
It's nine, right?
We have 10.
Quorum is 11.
Oh, you said it was 10.
Yeah, but Marie told me about two non-board members that are on the committee, Mr. Berger and Ms. Lee.
Right.
So that bumps the quorum up to 11. So you could submit this recommendation as a committee consensus, but it is not a, it is not a binding resolution of the committee.
Gary, it's Keith. I thought, I thought when one of my early meetings that we joined that the non, the non-committee members have a separate vote and count separate. Does that, but it's, do we still count against the quorum number?
Well, yes.
Okay.
Your vote is, your vote is counted, it's recorded separately, but.
It's recorded separately, but.
If, if Rabbi Niedeman is there, he shows up on my screen. Rabbi Niedeman, are you in the house? Let me try to call him on his cell phone and we'll see.
He's unmuted.
Yeah, I, I unmuted him, but he's not.
Rabbi Niedeman? Rabbi Niedeman? Let me try to call him.
Dell, this is Iris Cabrera. Do I allow to vote in this meeting?
Only if you're on the, only if you're on the committee, on the land use committee, unfortunately.
No.
Also, something else we had mentioned, I don't know if you was.
All right, I, yeah, hold on one minute, Rabbi. I just spoke to Rabbi meeting, Rabbi Niedeman, if it's okay with the committee, he's having trouble with the voice on the, on the website, but he is, supports the item. So if it's okay with the committee, we'll record him as being in the affirmative.
All right.
And I'll keep him on the, I'll keep him on the line for the other two votes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you to the committee, thank you for.
You're welcome. All right, now on to 135, 137 Bedford Avenue rezoning. It seems to me that the, the one concern that was raised was whether there was any way we could have a reassurance that the, any backyard restaurant usage would not be open. I don't know, Richard Barak, are you still here, Richard?
Absolutely, staying with you all night.
Thank you, God bless you.
I believe the property has remaining floor area. So as long as they have floor area, that's the same size of the yard behind the building. But again, they only control those two properties, right?
Yes.
Two separate properties, but in a certain way, they're in the application together, right? So as long as each building has remaining F A R, they could then build a one-story extension at the time of, in advance of converting the use, you know? So could you suggest a stipulation that commercial use group six and explicitly eating and drinking establishments would require in order to, that the backyard can only be used as an enclosed space and not, not for outdoor table service in the backyard? Now, obviously, that's not binding to the zoning. An old term, unless you could give me a new term, was gentleman's agreement. You know, you could ask Richard if he could put a letter on the record that obviously won't be available for tomorrow, but the board could call for that, asking that to happens through the remainder of the U L R process, that he, that a letter at least goes, the letter, if it goes to the borough president, it could be embedded in our recommendation report. And, you know, so if, at least doing a letter like that is in the spirit of something, again, not legally. is in the spirit of something, again, not legally binding, but it's sort of emotionally binding, you know, to putting their face forward.
Yes.
That could be a direction to call, that to say that use group requires, you know? And it's not that hard for the applicant to verify that they do have that nominal amount of floor area behind the building because you're allowed to do one-story, 100% lot coverage.
So what does the committee think of, of this, um, as, as a motion? To approve it with the recommendation that the applicant provide us, either us or the borough president, with a letter that would agree that commercial use in, uh, for group six?
A, eating and drinking establishment.
Eating and drinking, explicitly eating and drinking establishments would require, um, a backyard to be used only as an enclosed space?
I agree. This is Gina speaking, I agree.
I, I would agree to that. Um.
Yeah, but what kind of enclosed space? Because many want to do a glass space and sound transmission honestly doesn't work the same. So density in terms of thickness and type of material is always.
Sante, we have to get this done by tomorrow, and I think that we have to try to be reasonable here. If we start, if we get into, well, is it going to be glass? Is it going to, how thick is it going to be? Um, I, I don't know that we need to, to do that, I mean.
You could say in the spirit of sound attenuation, you know, something like that. Not get too far in it.
For the purpose of sound attenuation, how is that?
Because in theory, the neighbors can call DEP if sound was leaking too much past the property line.
Right.
And because it has to be table service, you can't fit that many people in a space. You know, the space wasn't a full 30, 40-foot backyard. I think Richard said it was like roughly 20 feet.
Right. I mean, if you're, if, if you're all in agreement with that, we can agree to this and then we can move on to Act Me.
Okay, I can second your motion.
I think it's a good proposal.
Okay, so let's, um, Jerry, you want to take the roll call? Can I second the motion? Trina?
I didn't.
And who made the motion?
I did.
Okay. Okay, here comes the vote. Teague?
Yes.
Vera? Not present. McKeva?
Yes.
Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Chesler?
Yes.
Drinkwater? Not present. Indig? Not present. Kaminsky? Not present. Katz? Not present. Liebovitz? Not present. Michele?
Not this way.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said no, not, not this way.
No, okay, fine.
Without a modification, yes.
All right, fine, so he's, that's a no, okay. Rabbi Niedeman? I unmuted him. Rabbi Niedeman? I think Jerry has to keep in touch with him.
He was trying to get back in. Rabbi, did you get back? Rabbi Niedeman? All right, I'll call him, continue the vote.
Neves?
Yes.
Sofa? Not present. Solano? Not present. Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Mr. Weidberg?
Yes.
Mr. Weiser? Not present. Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Okay. Wait for the other, um, person.
All right, Rabbi Niedeman votes yes.
Okay, thank you, so it's 10 yes, one no.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so moving right along here, um, we have Act Me, and then let me remind you, we also have to, um, give, see if we want to give a comment on the presentation that was given to the full board on the, um, on the flood, on, on the flood, uh, update. So there were no, um, there was nothing at the community board, no comments. Um, so that may be quick, I have one suggestion, but let's, let's try to deal with Act Me. Um, what can I say, you know, there, I think there were very valid, uh, comments, pro and con. So we have.
Hey Dell, I'm sorry, just, uh, disclosure that, um, I'm recusing myself from the vote because I, um, co-chair of Friends of Bushwick in the Park and had discussions with Rubenstein, you know, regarding, um, contributions towards the group in the park. So I'd be involved in the discussion, but I won't be voting.
Is that, are those discussions with Rubenstein? Or is, are they discussions with the applicant here in this, in this, um, application? And I ask you, because if you're actually discussing with the applicant, that would at least be some indication that they've actually been reaching out to the park. So I'm, I'm just wondering.
With Rubenstein.
So not with the, not with Act Me?
Not with Act Me.
Okay, okay, all right.
Well, Dell?
Yes.
Rabbi Niedeman has asked that the committee's recommendation, uh, addressed the odor issue.
Okay.
Okay, Dell, I'm also on the, the steering committee of the Friends of Bushwick in the Park, so I think I have to recuse myself as well.
Yeah, Jerry, I'm, I'm wondering, what, do you think since they, since they've been talking to, to Rubenstein, but not, not the applicant here, do you think they need to recuse themselves?
Jeff is Rubenstein.
Huh?
With, with Jeff.
Oh, with Jeff, okay. Okay, all right, yes, you're right, okay. But that doesn't mean you can't help contribute to the, to the, what we come up with here. Um, so, let's discuss this, I, um, I have to say that, that, you know, the project.
I'm sorry, Dell, is that going to skew then the, the vote?
No, we have a, we have a quorum, we'll just vote. We have a quorum, it's just that two people are recusing themselves.
Yeah, as, as long as we make quorum, Karen, then whichever way the vote goes, is, it'll just go. It is what it is.
Yeah, the recusals won't count against anything one way or the other. It's not like just abstaining. At least that's my understanding. So what do we have here? We've got the concern about the bulk and the height. Um, on the other hand, we have actually a lot of people, certainly more people spoke in support than didn't, spoke against, uh, um, in support of the, of the jobs, in support of, of just being appreciative that a business actually wants to stay in spite of all of the, the problems that have come, uh, upon the neighborhoods in the, with the shutdown. Um, I will, I just want to mention something that someone said, I thought this was interesting. The person, one of the people's in support said that, uh, they're taking a chance on us, that they could go someplace else. And yet they're saying they're willing to spend a huge amount of money to take a chance on our, our, our community. Um, that struck me, I, I don't know how, how it struck other people. And, um, it, it does look to me like the, like, uh, Act Me is diligently working to use local people, uh, to, uh, in, in the construction phase. So that, of course, would be, I think, in favor. Um, on the other hand, you know, there are a number of people who have raised the, uh, objection to the size of the, of the building. Um, and some people are.
Yeah, come, along with the, the concern is the, the zoning itself, the rezoning proposal itself, and M1-5, you know, it's unique to the area.
Yeah.
And, you know, and, uh, other property owners who are in the M1 district have said, you know, why, why, why not me? Why can't I get a, you know, an upzone? So, um.
And I agree, and you know, we've, we've addressed that, and we could, of course, address it again and say, look, why, this, this should be extended to other commercial, uh, businesses in the area.
Right, I don't know about M1-5 where everyone, you know, can build to the clouds. I feel like, you know, in, in Gowanus, in their deliberations, there's ideas thrown about creating some sort of manufacturing zoning designation that has kind of a medium range FAR, you know, rather than going from two right up to 4.8 or five.
Right, okay, so you, you wouldn't really want the M1-5 to be extended. Um, I, I did some checking on the Gowanus, I don't think it's actually gone through yet. We, we thought so, but apparently it, apparently it's still, um, in the talking stage.
Yeah, that's not being certified till likely January 19.
So, um, and because I think at that point we can, I think we've already discussed the, the, um, fact that at least our committee wants to ask that we be given the same tools, once it's, um, once it's certified. I agree with you, Steve.
Yes, I'm just wondering, whatever way the, you know, the, the committee ends up voting is, you know, just including some sort of condition or statement to city planning, to the city, to councilman Levin, that, you know, in certain terms, do we want this type of density spreading, um, you know, beyond this property?
Okay, that's, that's okay.
Consider a tool that's reasonable for those, for those properties that they can, you know, expand and thrive, but not overwhelm the, the surrounding neighborhood.
That said, though, this sets the precedent. It's hard to say no after you've said yes.
Right, and but, you know, and, you know, before, you know, 25 Ken, they were looking at, you know, the M1-2 for 14 blocks. And we could have potentially had all these huge, you know, um, developments throughout the industrial business zone. So I think, you know, having the special permit process and having this process allows us to, you know, provide feedback and, um, you know, community input as well. So I just wanted, you know, to point that out, as much as, believe me, we have been requesting for, you know, uh, city planning to allow these businesses and manufacturing, um, you know, buildings to be able to expand within their own property, and we don't have. And, you know, after this, I would love, you know, to include that, you know, the city takes another look. But if you recall and go back, they kept on saying, like, closer into, like, the cusp or, or, you know, the borders of the residential portion, that there was a buffer. So, um, I just wanted to point that out. And then also in Bushwick, the, you know, city planning is, you know, proposing to go M1-5 in a lot of, you know, the areas, so that's kind of, um.
Well, that's what this is, M1-5.
Uh, correct, M1-5. So, you know, that's kind of across, it seems like, you know, with city planning that, um, that therefore.
Well, if we do.
City planning, but I'm, I'm just saying, it seems like.
You think this is what city planning's looking toward?
Yeah, Bushwick.
I'm wondering if, if we do decide to approve the application, if we can put in a statement that says, that says that we do not want this particular zoning tool to extend to the rest of the, the surrounding area without giving us a chance to be, to have access to the Gowanus rezoning tools as soon as they're certified?
I would even go, yeah, I would even go further because after the whole 25 Ken, you know, um, I believe that we asked city planning to come back and look at the entire IBZ as a whole again. And I don't know where, you know, how far that went. And, you know, I, I do know that, um, the council member, um, you know, wanted that as well. So maybe that's something that we should add to go back and look at the IBZ for the M1-1 areas as well.
I, I agree, uh, but that's kind of, I wonder if, if we can be even more specific to say that we actually want access to the, to the Gowanus rezoning tools that are, that look like they're going to be certified into, in January.
I would like to, I'm not familiar with the extent of that, so I wouldn't want just to copy someone else's, you know, tools and replicate it here without, like, fully diving in and to see the impact.
Absolutely.
I, I would, I would reserve that, like, for us to kind of study it or have maybe city planning come and give us, you know, a presentation on what those tools are and what would the impacts be.
So maybe we can say that we, we've asked city planning to come back to us to reexamine the zoning in this, the manufacturing areas and to also, um, educate us on the new rezoning tools that are being certified for the Gowanus area. How, how does that sound?
That would be great.
Can I just clarify that on top of this sort of rezoning, there is also, even with the M-5 zoning, that if it's changed, there is still an exemption for it to go higher than the, what's included in that zoning allocation? Or am I misunderstanding?
So, go ahead, Richard, please.
Uh, so this application is unique, it's paired with an M1-5. So you just may want to make a motion, because the M1-5 at least gives you a chance to discuss height and bulk, where, when it's paired with a large-scale plan. But when it's not paired with a large-scale plan, then it's basically pursuant to zoning, right? So you get to have a dialogue. So if you want to say the board's policy is not to entertain M1-5 unless it's paired with another discretionary action such as a large-scale plan, you know, at least it's a little bit more customized, it's more project-specific.
So not to entertain M1-5 unless paired with?
Other discretionary actions such as a large-scale plan.
And what would classify as a large-scale plan?
Uh, so acreage, um, this site, right, it's a whole block. So I believe a general large-scale plan is, uh, I don't know if Ray's still on the call, but off the top of my head, I believe it's like 60,000 an acre and a half. If you want, I could get on this zoning resolution now before you're done tonight and tell you the exact threshold, but I'm pretty sure it's 60,000.
An acre and a half is fine.
There you go.
So that counts as a large-scale block?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right.
But then within that M1-5 with this addition, does the M1, M1-5 come with the speculation of the 85-foot limit in height? So there's still an additional ask to go beyond that, right?
Right, and then there's a triangle where you can't build. So the setback.
See, Richard, your volume's really, really loud.
And then there's an angle to the sky that's really, really steep. So most uses, because you don't have hotels allowed as right anymore, most uses don't want to have a really small floor plate and be a, a very, very tall building. So it's not a strong risk, but you never know. You know, will somebody want a vanity office and therefore they want a 30-story building and have floors of 10,000 square feet instead of 30,000 square feet, right? It's not likely, but you can't say no because the zoning doesn't say no. So this angle to the sky, especially when you have a through lot, you know, you're angling from both sides of the street, so.
Yeah.
You know, this angle gets up there by the time you get to the middle of the block.
But if it's with a large-scale plan, then how?
And it's brooms, right? So this was a little bit of an exchange, right? Because some parts of the site, they're asking for relief, but because they're getting relief. some parts of the site, they're asking for relief, but because they're getting relief, you're getting other parts of your site that are well below 85 feet.
Right.
So other parts of the street that you, when you walk around the block, you're going to get sections that are going to have a lot more light than if someone built a straight M1-5 street wall.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Plus you got the plaza space, the open space, right?
Yeah.
No guarantee in a straight M1-5, anybody would choose to give you a plaza space. So that was another thing that got tied to this large scale plan.
I'm not sure if I may have missed this, but was there, do we know like what percentage of the increased floor area would be rentable versus what is going to be used by ACME in this proposal?
Uh, I don't think I understand your question.
So say if the, it's a sort of 100% increase of the floor area and then of that total 100%, how much of it will be ACME used versus leased for revenue?
Yes, ACME has that four story building to itself completely.
So all the remaining retail and office spaces above will be for rent?
Yes. Everything else is, is, um, office space or retail.
Yeah.
And profit generating. ACME is completely, um, independent. It's, I mean, you can see everything is kind of, kind of leans over it and whatnot, but, but ACME is self-contained.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
It's a condominium where ACME is one condominium. The office rental slash retail is like another condominium.
Yeah, but I believe the question.
Any ACME offices would be in those shared spaces, but it seems that ACME is completely contained and is separate and the retail and the additional office spaces are profit generating real estate.
Well, the, the totality of the, the space built will be about 580,000, 588,000 square feet.
Right.
ACME is going to occupy 95,000, 90,000, if I'm not wrong.
Right. About approximately 90,000 for ACME. The, in that fourth story building. I don't think there's any, I didn't hear, I don't know that there's any prohibition from ACME's renting space in the office building or using it, but they, they haven't, I don't, I don't think that was addressed one way or the other. But I, I mean, as it was presented to us, ACME will be, um, will so occupy, have sole occupants of that four story building.
Yeah, I think I'm just trying to get a sense for the proportion of ACME's, ACME's needs and like the additional development that is happening to understand the sort of impact for the community potentially.
I think that's sort of what everybody's been trying to figure out and balance, you know? Um, yeah. So, um.
I just want to point out one other, I have one, one comment, which is just to re, for us to remember 12 Franklin, that they got their special permit and brought it through, which is the building next door that's in the renderings, but there's no, that the, the, the person that brought it through Eulerp flipped it and it's not, or I don't know if there's a new buyer or if it's still for sale, but they brought it, they brought it through Eulerp and, and it got the new zoning designation and became worth a lot more money. And then the person that did that has sold it. I, I don't think that, I, I think that there, the intention is to go through with this development, but I think we have to remember that that happens.
I also, I, I believe, as I said that before, uh, the only things is certain year is that we have ACME and the most, it's an increasing space. Yes, it's a renovated space, but it's not much more of what they already own. Uh, they've been owning that for 30, 40 years already. It's been a, a family property. And the issue is that what is the unknown is that the remaining 450,000 square feet, which will be development and will be development in dimension and size, which we have not established. We have no business plan. We have no manufacturing space that been dedicated strictly to manufacturing on this development space. Uh, we have, there is really no binding and no commitment of any type. You know, I'm, I'm into the development. If the development meets certain criteria and, and certain commitment. And, uh, and I believe that's, uh, uh, yes, we have a like union organization calling from people from different community boards, but we could take tomorrow and have a petition from actual residents or people that they were not able to be here tonight. And we'll see how people will feel about this. Uh, because the, the issue is the scale. Uh, it's not about ACME staying there. It's about a development growing around ACME. And that's a huge impact. And, uh, yeah, if I'm, if we have to be here to work for the community, uh, these are the considerations that, that we have to make. And, and, and it will be superficial to just vote on something based on what? And a bench, a bike rack, and a planter, and a little bit more of open space. It doesn't take away the fact we have taken an industrial zoning and industrial land and have it converted and created the precedent. The precedent was created with 25 Kent already. And the comparison in the proposal, they've used that as a reference. They use all the large hotel, all these large scale that now they've, they'd advance into the Green Point, into this smaller historic district area and will continue to advance down on Franklin in the future, down into the Newton Creek. You'll see. But these are my concerns.
Yes, I, I think they have valid concerns. Um, it's really a balancing and I, I don't know, um, what the, what the committee thinks. I, I will point out that, uh, one other thing, if we decided to approve it, we could also have, um, either a recommendation or even a condition that there be a restriction in the deed to keep the building, uh, the, the four story building, uh, used as manu, for manufacturing use in the event ACME leaves.
But also.
The possibility.
Also, something I'd asked before is, um, Dale, is about making commitments and not, I know we have a, the special permit, which you have to ask for a special permit. One of the major allowing, uh, use is a hotel. It's the type of business which a community expressed concern. The quality of work that they produce may not necessarily go back to the community in the way we want. They don't go back in type of job, in instability in type of job. And we don't know what will happen in five years. Will we want to convert that into an hotel? Uh, there is no commitment from the development side. Uh, what is, what do we have as a community? You know, maybe, uh, that's one of the bonding, uh, agreement that we should have is that you're not going to ask for certain uses, for certain special permit in the future. Uh, you know, I believe, uh, the community needs to be convinced in, uh, with tangible way. You know, you can get married without making a premarital agreement if you have something to lose or something to jeopardize your assets. Those are the community who have assets. The type of zoning we have currently is part of our community asset. Uh, you know, uh, those are the considerations. And how can we?
I agree, uh, about the precluding hotel uses, even though it requires a special permit. I would like to suggest that that be a condition that, um, just, you know, protect, protect this, protect us from that.
I agree with, with Stephen, um, something regarding the hotels.
How would you, how would you, how would you, um, how would you say that? Because I can say that, first let me just say contingent on a restriction in the deed that use of the four story building remains zoned for manufacturing use. Is that acceptable?
Yes, Dale, but there is also.
The next condition with the hotel, how would we put that?
Dale, let's go back to the first condition.
Okay.
The only concern that I do have is, again, the resistance from city planning, um, about putting the restrictive deed. Um, so I think we should include something other than also, like you could include the restrictive deed, but whereas we need some other type of, um, guarantee, whether it's that they apply for IDA or some other memorialization memorandum, something binding, um, that that building, uh, that portion of, of the property remains manufacturing.
Well, that would be.
I'm just concerned, you know, that city planning has been pushing back not only on this project, but other, other projects as well, um, that they're saying that there's no need for a restrictive deed.
Okay. So how would you, how would you, how would you put that? How would you put that? You would, so we would have asked for the, a restrictive, a restriction in the deed or what?
Proof of filings for IDA, some sort of, um, memorandum. I don't know. Does anybody else have any other like?
What's an IDA? What is an IDA?
Special Development Authority, um, Agency Application. It's basically they are, um, getting or receiving, um, incentives on the, um, construction. It's a tax abatement program.
So I, I don't, I don't know what it is that you're asking for here. I don't know how you would put this. In addition to the deed restriction, um, what are you asking us to, to ask for?
That they're applying, that it, it has to remain 25, for 25 years, it has to remain manufactured. Otherwise they don't get those, um, credits.
So you don't want.
It's the only other way. It's the only other way that we could basically have any guarantee is that they guarantee that they're going to apply for that program.
Okay. So that they, they applicant guarantee?
Yes. The applicant guarantee.
Guarantee. It will apply for. For what? Will apply for?
IDA.
IDA? Which would make it remain, uh, manufacturing for what? 25 years? 25 years?
Yes, it's up to 25 years.
Jeff, is the intent to apply for IDA?
Um, we've been considering it. Um, it came up with, uh, the discussion with the councilmen, um, you know, as a way, it's sort of like what Karen is saying is a way to, you know, have the, it's, it's a mechanism where, um, the city becomes a party to something that's happening on site. And so it would give the city standing, um, to basically police, you know, certain activities that are negotiated in this contract. So it seemed like a good way, um, to enforce, it's really an enforcement mechanism is like the, so, so we talked to Steve at one point. Um, yeah. And we, yeah. So we're, it's one option that's on the table is what I would say.
Okay. So we have either a deed restriction or, 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 or a guarantee that the, um, applicant would apply for IDA and that would keep it as manufacturing space for how long? Did you say Karen?
Yeah, 25 years.
Okay. Um, we also, I think, want to make sure that they're going to have a state of the art, um, system to prevent, to prevent, um, the odors, you know?
But also still on the manufacturing, uh, I understood that what we, now we're talking about manufacturing, we're talking about the space is going to be occupied by ACME. I believe that, so, uh, now 500,000 square feet, I must 500,000 square feet, they are going to be commercial between commercial and retail. Actually, uh, yeah, retail's only 33,000 and, and commercial 583,000. So, uh, we're talking to maintain what? Only ACME? We're talking about we have another huge amount of commercial space, which are undefined. Now, uh, this building can have roof. Let's make one example, possible potential impact. So is going, one of this commercial space going to be a bar or a restaurant on the roof, uh, like we have experience in other parts of Williamsburg, is going to that have an impact on our historic district, uh, sounds, quality of life. So there is so many things that are so vague, uh, uh, you know, will be certain if the entire space will be a manufacturing space, certainly we're not going to have a, a bar on the roof and we're not going to have restaurants. And this is an entire block. The amount of potential are incredible and not established.
Okay. Now that, that's another thing, but we were about to go on to the hotel. Uh, we had, we started to do a contingent, a, a contingency on, on not, there not being a hotel, um, an application for a hotel or.
But it could be a different venue. It could be a bar or restaurant. It doesn't need to be a hotel.
One thing at a time.
All right. One thing at a time, please. Yes.
Sure.
State of, or a state of the art emission control system.
Dale, do we want to, um, add some of the environmental?
Sure. Yes, but let's, and that's, that's one of them, I think. But yes. Now let's, let's get, um, the hotel. Um, I'm not sure how we can, um, how we can do, voice this. Richard, maybe you can help us if you have any ideas, because we're concerned that they're going to just, um,
Apply for now the special permit.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, um, whether language could be on the special permit, uh, documents, because the special permit is based on what the billings department is reviewing, whether language can go on there, uh, maybe it's restricted by city planning to preclude subsequent, uh, filing of the, of, uh, the hotel use. Or use group five, which is for hotels and motels.
So language in the, uh, special permit, precluding subsequent filing for hotel use?
Yeah.
Could we exclude other entertainment type of business, bar, restaurant, music on the roofs?
You, you can try. You know, you could certainly put out ideas that you believe are problematic.
So we're talking about, go ahead. Who was that? What was that, Trina?
We could ask for a green roof rather than a hotel bar, a restaurant bar on the roof.
So we can ask that there would be, that we will, we can ask that there be no, um, no permission given to, uh, have a hotel bar on the roof?
Or not a hotel, but a bar, a bar restaurant.
They, whatever.
Not, I didn't mean hotel. I'm sorry. No, no restaurant bar on the roof.
Or music, amplified music has happened already in Williamsburg for years, had a tremendous impact in many resident, on the life of many residents there.
I would just want to make something clear though. We're not, we're not saying that we don't want any restaurants within the project, correct?
No, no, just on the roof.
Because, yeah, what if, you know, they want to open up a coffee shop or?
Oh, they do. They do. They actually do. It's going to be retail. Absolutely. They do. They, they said there would be food, you know, served.
I think a restaurant on the roof is fine. I feel like having allowed, you know, just a, a bar that, uh, there's a DJ operation up there. That's another story.
So no amplified music on the roof?
So no bar or amplified music on the roof?
No amplified music.
Right.
A sitting down restaurant where people only sit down to eat, yes.
Okay. So just no amplified music on the roof?
Yeah.
All right. Um.
But it's not just, it's the idea of the bar. I don't know if Dale, uh, uh, sounds propagate. Just try to have like 500 people sitting on the roof and be on the, on a, hopefully it's not going to be a nine story, but being up, uh, above all the other smaller three story building in the story district, I will. I will tell you that that 500 people will, that sound, just that voice will propagate.
So do we want to say no restaurant or no bar?
No bars.
Bars or amplified music on the roof?
Pretty much, this is pretty clear already. You know, it's one of the stipulations for rooftops to begin with, with the SLA. But it's good to add it, that we, we don't say no, no amplified music.
Oh, okay, well.
But it's just add it, let's add it, it's important.
Okay.
Possible.
Okay, and we're actually saying no bars either, so. Okay, thanks, Gina. So environmental?
Okay, compliance with local law 97 regarding carbon emissions.
Okay.
Which they indicated they were looking into. Stormwater wastewater management system, ensuring that the water is handled on site.
Yeah, just add to have a goal of adding zero wastewater to the system.
Right.
As close as that as possible.
So stormwater and wastewater management to provide a net zero into the system and handle everything on site.
Right.
Do we want to require use of low carbon concrete or at least look into it? They said that they were looking into it.
Yeah, it's not a law yet. I know it's a law that's being worked on. And so I don't know if we can acquire it.
I think we should suggest it, even though, you know, wait, wait for the laws, Derek, we know that.
So that's not a, it's not contingent on that, it's a suggestion?
I wouldn't make a contingent because there's still, you know.
Right, right, right. Okay, so we've got.
Concrete and there's various, you know, certain projects cannot use that. So I just want to be clear that we shouldn't make a contingent. They should look into if it's feasible.
Suggestion to look into.
But we do want them to comply, which they said, with the City of New York's Local Law 15, which is the Bird Friendly Materials Law.
Right. Right.
The last stipulation we had was regarding ongoing communication with the community or the community board regarding the construction. So it'd be truck staging, defined hours of pile driving, air monitoring.
So let's see now, how do we, I want to make sure I get this.
I think it's probably given, but it doesn't hurt to put it in. So if the plan is worked out for the truck staging and the hours of pile driving and the air monitoring.
Okay, wait a minute, let me, let me get this here. Okay, let's say that again.
Okay, a request for ongoing communication with the community via a community liaison regarding the conditions of the construction such as truck staging, defined hours of pile driving and air monitoring. Does that sound right, Karen?
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so what about requiring lowering the height of the building?
Well, I, I personally think that's just, I, I think that's a deal breaker. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know that if we're going to, if, if, if our approval is contingent on that, I think we can, we're really basically not approving the application.
What we are disregarding still, Dale, is that this building has to be lower. I mean, there's been definitely, one of the major concern is about merging this lot and making this building. You know, we, we're analyzing other economic things here, but we still have, we are land use and, and this building is unprecedented. It conglomerate and create an entire block. It's a monolithic presence that is going to put nine story overlooking a completely different scale. It's dwarfing everything.
So if we're going to do that, then I, my, my advice is that we have a simple, we reject the, the project. But I think that what we've come up with so far, including how we don't want to entertain M15 in the future unless paired with other discretionary actions such as large scale plan and all these other things that we're saying, this is, this would go with, this would go with approving contingent on these things. If we're going to say we won't approve it unless they lower the, unless they change the plan and, and lower the, the height. It seems to me that is, that's a simple, we reject because of the, of the height. Not withstanding.
But now we can propose with the modifications that we are proposing.
Well, are you saying we would like it to, like them to continue, to, to consider lowering the height? Because if it's, if it's contingent on, that's a.
You can say yes, but it require a smaller, smaller building.
Four story less.
Sante, I have.
Sorry, sorry.
I, I totally support ACME staying in the neighborhood. I love everything about them. And, you know, just, you know, so much about the two thousand resoning was acceleration of manufacturing leaving the neighborhood. And here we have a business that's been here for the ages and wants to be here and, and stay on. And I also love the idea of, you know, the, the commercial project bringing in, you know, supposedly up to 2,000 jobs. I feel like we need to diversify our economy in the city. And we need to diversify the neighborhood. It's just dominated by luxury residential housing. So I'd say it's really important to, to bring more work into the neighborhood. But I just feel like, I think, you know, just the, you know, the scope of this building, the size of this building is overwhelming. I just like to strongly urge these guys to see if there's a way to get this thing, you know, more comfortable level. So.
Okay, we can, I can, we can do that, but I think that that's not an absolute condition. That's, we strongly urge them to look at that. If it's an absolute condition, then my opinion is that is a rejection of the application. And I'm not saying, look, whatever the committee feels you want to do, you can do, but you know, if we're putting in all these contingencies, it seems to me that's based on the idea that we would, we would approve with these contingencies. And then we could have a very strong recommendation that they reevaluate and go back and, and, and attempt and try to, try to bring the project into, to a, to a smaller scale, to, to downsize their project.
But at the same time, we did, we did approve Franklin. And then also if, I forgot how many stories as of right currently what they could do. It's still a large scale and that goes without saying throughout, throughout the IBZ.
Yeah, 103 or 13 too. That's seven stories. It's, the superstructure is already built.
I'm, I just wanted to throw that out there. Personally, I think, I think, moving forward, I think this committee needs to sit down. And I think we need to come up with a rubric of future projects and score it. And yes, every single project is going to be unique and it's going to be different. And, but at the same time, I just feel that we, we really need to come up with a rubric and define impacts and define the needs. But I just feel that any other property owner could go, you know, how many stories high right now as of right? So, you know, denying this, I think it's unfair if that was the case. And that's just my two cents.
If I can say something, Karen?
I'm sorry, so, Richard, were you saying something?
I think it's Keith.
Oh, Keith, Keith, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I mean, I, I unfortunately, I mean, I tend to be with Karen. I think the real issue is, is, you know, we have, we, we listen to these one off projects, you know, one at a time and, you know, listening to this, I'm, you know, you know, Steve, as you said, you know, local jobs in the community. I mean, obviously, a number of these jobs are construction, so they're not necessarily long term. But, you know, even still, you know, they're looking to bring commercial space into the neighborhood. I, I feel especially coming out of COVID, local jobs where you can live and work in the same community is something we should be striving for rather than assume everyone's going to take a, a public transport into the city into Manhattan from there. So in that perspective, I like it. I, I'm not thrilled with the dense city. I'm not thrilled with the height. But I don't know how you say no to this when, with, with other things. I think we really need to strategize and probably work with city planning who needs to really drive this more than they do to come up with standards for this. But otherwise, I, I, you know, I think with a lot of the conditions that we've talked about, it seems like this is something we ought to be approving and keeping ACME here and, you know, trying to get some more local places for people to work who can live and work in the same community.
I don't think this is going to be, the target is going to be for locals to, to work in this type of space. As a matter of fact, the space have not an established size and they are flexible space as typically happen in this commercial office space. So you can start from definitely not less than 1,500 or 2,000, but you could become 10,000, 20,000. Most likely, who is going to be able to afford this larger organization today? But my point is another one. I wasn't part of this community board. I didn't vote on the project on frankly, I would not have voted. I believe the scale of this is impressive. And we're talking about moving forward and future. This is the future. This is moving forward. These other community board member that they weren't part of other decisions this community board has made. And I'm not against ACME. I don't want to kill the project. But I believe all the things we have said together with the height, and the height is extremely important. Because this is a spot zoning, there is no other merger zone that is going to happen. The future is left is the spot zoning. We're going to continue on this. And this is the time to start making parameter and start making decision. I don't know exactly, there is a way to say no entirely, or there is a way to say yes, but with this and that and all the other modification, it's possible.
But my point was, my point was, Department of City Planning wanted to rezone 14 blocks, 14 blocks.
Yeah.
That would allow large scale development. So this was our alternative to have the tool, the special permit, so that we can actually have a say. Before, 14 blocks could have potentially been large scale, huge, huge buildings. So I agree with you, Sante, totally, that we need to have city planning come back and, and really, that, that was their promise.
Yes, absolutely. And we absolutely can demand that in the future. But what I'm trying to, what I feel very strongly about here is that if we, we will either, we will approve this with the various contingencies that we've come up with. The environmental contingencies, the, the, the request that they, they not be allowed to apply for a hotel special permit, the various other things. But if we go also to the point where we include as an absolute condition that they downsize, that's the equivalent of an out and out rejection. And if that's what we're going to do, let's just do it upfront. I don't, I, I, I happen to, I've been doing a lot of soul searching about this. I think that personally, I think it's, it's an incredibly ugly design. I think it's very oppressive. On the other hand, I, I think it's, it's, I think that it will provide, it will keep business and manufacturing here. It will provide at least for commercial space rather than for another enormous, huge market rate residence. And I think either we, I, I think that, you know, it's, it's not to say we approve it on the absolute condition that they downsize to what? One floor lower, two floors lower? That's the equivalent of, of, believe me, the borough president, I think, Richard can see otherwise. I think that everybody would really see that that was just, or just denying the application.
Thank you.
And so. It's one or the other, but you know, what are we going to say? That they take off one floor?
Two story.
Two stories, three stories, four stories.
What if we added in a few more, I don't know, there, there, it's a huge rezoning and without a lot of, the community feedback is ACME fish and, and jobs which are important.
And office space.
Open space, I don't know if you consider the open space around 25.
No. No, I didn't, I didn't say open space. I said office space.
Office, yeah. But what we asked for, I know it's hard with what Richard had said, with a community facility of some sort, some sort of community space within the building, or ask the developer to fund maintenance in a certain amount of maintenance money to our local parks that are hurting. That necessarily have to be Bushwick Inlet Park, but maybe there can be, I know with Green Point Landing, there was a commitment to the Parks Department to, to funding parks. Maybe there, we could ask for something because really this, this is a market rate office building and market rate retail. It's not, I mean, it's, it's a lot of money that's, that's flowing through there. And this is our one chance to get something for the community other than ACME fish, which I love.
Yes, we could, we could ask that they, that they provide after hours space to, to, for, for meeting space for the communities. We could ask that they, well, providing funding for parks is funny because if they just give money to the parks, it, it's not easy. Well, there's a Friends of Bushwick Park. There is a Friends of Bushwick Inlet Park. So they could commit monies to Friends of Bushwick Inlet Park for use.
For the maintenance of the park or something. There could be, it could be a specified amount that we could work out. I know.
Yeah, I believe it, I believe, I, I don't know if, if, Richard, if you.
Yeah.
Want to commit, correct me?
I, I don't know what the outcome was with Steve and transmitter park. But I know in the context of transmitter park, the idea that our office put out was a controller fiduciary account to be dedicated to a specific park. But I don't know if that actually.
Happened.
I'm, so I'm not sure if that is a precedent for something that is achievable, but that was what our office had.
I'm chair of Friends of Transmitter Park and, no, I mean, it's specified in the deed that X amount of, of money the developer needs to contribute towards transmitter park. But I don't know how enforceable that is, whether that will actually go to the park or go into the, the general fund. I think other spaces on East River Waterfront can attest to that. So that's why I'm suggesting specificity in terms of X amount of dollars to hiring a gardener or a maintenance person or a PEP officer. I don't even know if it's feasible even with parks and recreation that that's a tool. But, you know, it was, it's definitely a tool, something. But, you know, it was, it's definitely a tool, something that's in need in the district.
So how much money would we want them to commit?
We could talk to Mary Salick and have a number by the end of, I mean, we could, we could approve approve our recommendation and fine-tune it tomorrow with a number from Mary Salick if we can find a position.
Okay.
Yeah, the board could add a friendly amendment, right?
Sure.
And you will, can you ask for a new space?
One at a time here.
Sorry. Keep in mind timing, right? There's a lot of, unlike a typical development project, this is a lot of upfront cash flow to take care of ACME's needs to be up and running, right? And then the rest of the building gets built and it gets occupied over a certain pace. So keep in mind of, is there a trigger point that's reasonable to even have cash flow to contribute to a park? You know, you say it from day one, it's coming out of the pockets before there's even an opportunity to revenue, right? So.
Right.
You could decide if that's a worthy thing to consider.
Yeah.
The C O for the commercial building is before that's issued or something like that.
Yeah. I think we need to have a vote because it's really late. I have to write up this report tonight. Uh, Trina's got to write up her report and um, I would, does anybody want to make, I would make a motion that.
Del?
Yes.
You don't have a quorum.
Well, we're going to have to do something or we don't come tomorrow to the board for anything. So.
The committee can make a recommendation to you.
I know that, yes. I know, we do this all the time. So I reckon, I I would make a motion that we, and it would, if it's not a quorum, then we'll, you you get the recommendation that I bring this to the board. So so I would, I would recommend that we approve contingent on all of these things that we recommend, that we we we, we strongly recommend that they reconsider the possibility of downsizing, but that but that that not be the an absolute condition and that we also have the, we also make a statement that we don't want this tool to extend to the rest of the planning, to the rest of the area. And we talked about that and how the rezoning, um, we want city planning to come back to discuss the zoning of manufacturing areas, including the possibility of using um, tools that are being discussed with in the Gowanus area. Um, and that it's contingent on restriction in the deed of that for use of the four-story build, that use of the four-story building remains zoned for manufacturing or that they that the applicant um, guarantee it would apply for an I D A. Um, that there'll be state-of-art emission control system, that there'd be language in the um, in the in the special permit, precluding subsequent filing of a hotel use, no bars or amplified music on the roof. Um, that they have to um, that they will commit to um, providing money to the maintenance of the Bushwick Inlet Park after copy of the auxiliary, C O of the, to the auxiliary building is issued and that we, they comport with the environmental issues that Trina stated. And finally, that there'd be a request, that we request that they, there'd be an ongoing um, ongoing communication with a community liaison. So that that's my recommendation.
I second.
So let's see how many, you know, yays and nays.
Del Teague?
Yes.
Vera? Not present?
No, she's not here.
Trina McKeva?
I'm recusing.
I have to call you anyway.
Okay, I'm just telling you what I'm doing.
Okay. Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Chesler?
Recuse.
Not present. Indig? Not present. Kaminsky? Not present. Katz? Not present. Mr. Libovich? Not present. Mr. Michelli?
No.
Rabbi Niederman?
Is he available by phone?
He's not answering anything. I don't know what the issue is, but he's not answering the call. Karen Nevers?
Yes.
Mr. Sofa? Not present. Mr. Solano? Not present. Mr. Vega? Mr. Vega?
I think he's got a thumbs up.
Yeah, I see it. Mr. Whiteberg?
Yes.
Mr. Weiser? Not present. Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
No.
Two recusals and two noes?
Okay. Okay, thank you all.
Wait, Del, wasn't there one other little thing we had to deal with?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. One more thing, don't go away. Um, there was a presentation um, with respect to the zone, the the flood, the flood zones. And um, here's what I recommend. We we don't really, there were no, um, there were no comments at the full board. But um, and and indeed, our community board is not as as um, as significantly um, affected by the the situation. However, there are a number of community boards that have a lot of or significant number of small homes that are going to have to renovate their homes in order to to comply with the with the regulations. And so I suggest that we support the those community boards' requests that that the city um, partner with the small homeowners to help them to manage the costs of the of the renovation. Uh, so that's that's my, it's my only comment on that.
Um, this is William. I have to excuse myself post-negotiations with the city.
Okay. Oh, wait, why why do you have to accuse yourself, William?
I'm with Small Business Services and we're involved in those discussions.
Oh, okay. Well, um, you don't, you don't have to, you can say, if you have a comment that you want to make, you can, wouldn't vote on it.
Can't.
So is there anything you want to mention that we should know about?
No, I just said I'm not allowed, I just sound for.
Okay.
Just like accusing myself.
Okay, okay. So that's that's my recommendation.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, Marie?
Del Teague?
Yes.
Not present? Ms. McKeva?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Chesler?
Yes.
It's Drinkwater, not present? Mr. Indig? Not present? Ms. Kaminsky? Not present? Mr. Katz? Not present? Mr. Libovich? Not present? Ms. Michelli?
Abstain.
Rabbi Niederman? Not answering the call? Ms. Nevers?
Yes.
Mr. Sofa? Not present? Mr. Solano? Not present? Mr. Vega had recused himself.
Right, excuse.
Mr. Whiteberg? I think he left the call. Not present? Mr. Weiser? Not present? Mr. Berger?
Yeah.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
One abstention and one recusal. You still, you still need the committee to recommend that you may present this to the full board.
What do you mean, I need the committee to recommend that I?
You don't have a quorum.
So what do I have to, okay, committee, do you recommend that I present this to the full board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So that's it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Del.
See you all tomorrow.
Remind me the final vote on the uh, the.
I'm sorry, ACME? Thank you, Richard, for staying with us. The final vote on ACME, um, oh, do you have that? What was it?
Probably has it.
Six, six, yes?
There was no quorum, Richard.
No, I get that.
But it was six yes, two no, two recusals.
It's enough for Del to be allowed to bring it to the full board.
Yes.
And if the board decides to vote on that, the board will vote on that. And if for some reason life doesn't work out, do it in January.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Richard, so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Hi, everyone.
Good night, everybody. See you tomorrow.
Del, thank you.
Thank you.